Got it? Okay. We're gonna open with a prayer from Pastor Brandon McGowan of Panama City First Assembly, followed by the prayer led by General Queen. Please rise.
Heavenly Father, Lord, we just come to you this morning grateful for another day to be in your presence, Father. Lord, we thank you for every person in this room. And, Lord, we just pray a blessing over each and every person, their family, everything that they represent in the areas that they represent. Father God, I ask you for this meeting today, Lord, that your hand would be upon every person that speaks, upon every decision that's made. And, Father, not just this meeting, Lord, we put this city, we put this county, we put this community, this state and this country, Lord, in your hands. Father, we ask you that 2023 would be a year that would be better than any year we could ever expect, that this would be a year of blessings, Father, that this would be a year of growth, and that this would be a year, Lord, that we see you move in our community, that we take back the things that need to be taken back. Father, we give it to you, and I pray for every leader in this community, Father, Lord, that they not just see themselves as a city leader, but they see themselves as conduits, Lord, to this community through you, Lord, to bring change. Father, we commit this time to you, commit this meeting to you, commit this whole year to you, Father, in your precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call a roll, please.
Mayor Bernicki.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Raeder.
Here.
Commissioner Street.
Here.
Commissioner Halagus.
Here.
Mayor, you have form.
Very good. We have the minutes from January 10th. Everyone had a chance to read those. additions, deletions, so say at this time, otherwise entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move approval of the minutes from the City Commission Meeting of January the 10th.
Second amendment, ma'am. Call a roll.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Raeder.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay. You know, this is one of those mornings that was chilly, and, well, at least it wasn't raining. And I, one of those mornings that you want to stay in bed, you know, because it's cool. It's like sometimes you wake up in the middle of the night, it's cold, it's raining, have to use the washroom and go to flush and it doesn't work, you know? So you go look outside, what's going on with my water? And you see these guys across the street fixing it, okay? These are the people, they were the first ones here this morning. These are the guys that we count on, all the time. And today, we're gonna honor one of them.
I love that you added the washroom. The fact they called it washroom. I know, I know. It's a hard thing for you.
Danny, would you come up? Daniel Jones began his career with the, oh, come on up, I'm sorry. With the COPC in November of 1988. He has been with us now for 34 years. His final day working with the city is officially 1/30 of 23. He began his career with the utility department and worked there for 11 years as a service tech. He fixed water lines, sewer lines, water meters, et cetera, and with him having a CDL license, he also got the job of running the water truck opening block lines, which was well before the city owned one of the big VAC trucks we are fortunate enough to have in today's day and age. In 1999, Danny moved over to Streets and Drainage Departments as an equipment operator too, working on the right-of-way crew. Two years later, Danny applied for the crew leader position, and the very day of Danny's crew leader interview was a day Danny will never forget during his entire career. On this day, Danny found a body inside a storm drain, an assisted PCPD in the recovery of this unfortunate individual. I remember that. I remember who it was. You can only imagine his surprise and the difficulty of this duty. Danny remained a crew leader for four years and decided he wanted to move over to Drainage Crew, back as an equipment operator too, and his primary responsibility being the main VAC truck operator for Streets and Drainage. He also volunteered to work the city inmate crew rotation and did so as a state of Florida non-DC supervisor for 15 years. Over the last 23 years, Danny's efforts working on the VAC truck have removed and prevented unimaginable tons of sediment from our streets, alleys, bay savers, stormwater pipes, ponds and ditches from entering our local bay systems. His ability to open block storm pipes and drains, no matter what time of day or night, and in no matter the weather conditions, have saved a multitude of homes and businesses from being flooded and prevented property loss. During his entire tenure as a city employee, Danny has been very active member of his church, the Greater Faith Firstborn Church of the Living God, as a deacon and musician. In Danny's own words, "I am blessed to have assisted numerous churches, choirs, and praise teams across the city of Panama City the past 38 years," at almost every cookout or event held by Streets and Drainage. Danny has been our go-to leader, leading us in grace or prayer for safety and success. Danny has always enjoyed the camaraderie at the city and especially enjoyed our city Christmas parties. He remembers winning a big screen TV and even an air fryer, which he gave to his wife. Danny will be extremely missed. Yeah, so she could cook, right?
How special is that?
His presence, his skills, his knowledge, as well as his positive outlook and true faith he has in our God. We wish him all the best, and already we miss him.
Hey, Danny.
How's it going, Danny?
Yeah, Danny.
In honor of your retirement, 34 years of dedicated service to the city of Panama City, November 29th, 1988 to January 30th, 2023. Thank you for your service. May you look back on your years of service and find a sense of accomplishment and pride. May you look forward to the future as a time of enjoyment and an opportunity to live life to the fullest. Congratulations, Danny.
You're here, bud.
in your home. Line the wall, big man. When I first came on, I challenged all of these guys in all the departments to see if they could work faster or longer, better than me. Most of them, I kinda took care of them. I beat them. But this is the background of the city. I call them boots on the ground. You guys keep it up and follow Mr. Jones' example and keep doing a good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's a true example of a public servant.
There you go. Okay, we've got an opening on the Board of Architects. The Board of Architects has one vacant position for a three-year term that expires on September the 9th, 2025. Board of Architects reviews height adjustment requests for high-density residential complexes who are consists of five members. The ordinance creating the Board of Architects provides at least two members shall be architects who are either active, inactive, or retired, and who are or were licensed and in good standing with the state in which they practice, and if inactive or retired, were in good standing at the time of their retirement. So it recommends the other membership positions be filled by civil engineer, city or county planner. Members are appointed by the City Commission for a term of three years and are not subject to term limitation. Board members must reside in Bay County. Those meetings are held on a net needed basis, so if you are interested, please contact Community announcements. We got any pictures that go with this? There we go. Quality of Life Department, Public Works, and PMO work together to install playground equipment for ages two to five and five to 12 at Suddeth Park. Playgrounds have been completed and are ready for kids to enjoy and explore this weekend. Chapman Park will begin renovations this month and will begin a new playground for the surrounding community. Woods Ball Field revitalization project started this month and included numerous repairs, sod, updated batting cages with astroturf, a water fountain, dugouts, playing field upgrades, and a concrete pad for concession area. Woods Ball Field project is planned to be completed by the end of the month. Glenwood Community Center received some maintenance and upkeep in anticipation of its reopening schedule for February 1st under the management of the Quality of Life Department. Future of this community center will feature many new programs for members of the community to enjoy. Information on upcoming programs is available at the Quality of Life Department's Facebook page. Zumba classes have started at Monday nights at Oakland Terrace Clubhouse. First class on January 9th filled the clubhouse with over 100 people attending. This is a free, high-energy fitness class that provides a total body workout while having a lot of fun. Classes are Monday nights from 5:30 to 6:30 through February 27th. More information, visit the Quality of Life Department's Facebook event. Movie Night in January is a drive-up movie feature featuring the film Top Gun Maverick. This free event has had such a positive response that another viewing night has been added. This event will be on both January 27th and 8th at Panama City Marina Civic Center from 7:00 PM until 9:00 PM. Parking will open at 6:00 PM. It will be on a first-come, first-served basis, is limited to 100 vehicles. Additional space will be available for moviegoers to set up chairs and blankets if parking is no longer available. Harrison's Kitchen and Bar will also be featuring a special drive-up movie menu and concessions that will be just a short walk from the viewing area. More information on this event, please visit the Quality of Life Department's Facebook Teen Kickback Club has begun its new teen program. It is a program that runs one Monday a month from January till April. Each event will have a different theme and activity. This program allows teens to have a different outlet to engage with their community and peers in a positive way, and also provide safe, fun, and positive socializing activities with friends. January was teen game night at Davenport Park and was a fun night filled with board games, Xbox, and snacks. Next teen night is a dodgeball tournament, February the 10th. For additional information and to register, please visit Quality of Life Department's Facebook event. Lot going on. Okay, at this time, we have audience participation. I've got three people that have signed up to speak. So first one is Derek Thomas.
Morning. Derek Thomas, 1100 West 10th Street. Hello to WKG-C.org and 90.7, anyone who has to work but wants to find out what's going on in the city. Here again to talk about the same thing I've always been talking about for more than eight years. My neighborhood is becoming flooded. If anybody wants to see what that looks like, if you go out to 11th Street and go west and go three blocks and then make a left on the only street that connects Beach Drive and 11th, and go one block south and look to the right, you'll see a house that has been there for more than 60 years and been paying property taxes on the house for more than 60 years. Right behind it, there is an empty lot, which is now built up to a height well above the height of the road, and on the opposite side of that is where the drain is for that block. There's three drains that relieve the water for 50 properties. Those drains are in the middle of each one of the blocks, leading up to Lake Caroline, and those areas next to the drains have now been built up to a height which is making it impossible for the water to get out of the neighborhood. These, the one in the middle has actually, it took about four years after the hurricane, but finally got it cleared out. The people that lived there cleared it out, and now the water flows. But next to Lake Caroline and next to Buena Vista, the road, that property is now going to be destroyed unless something is done about it. There is a drain opening, like a service hatch right there next to where the empty lot is. You could put in an extra drain if that was to, the plan was to abandon the existing drain and put in another drain. That could be done, but that's gonna be very expensive, and it's gonna be left up to the people who've been paying property taxes on their houses for all these years and not for the people that have put in loads of dirt, more than 50 loads of dirt. Each load costs more than they've paid in property taxes for the entire year. So they put in more than 50 years' worth of property taxes. Across the street from me, they put in more than 75 years of property taxes in dirt right on top of the drain. I was told that that property wasn't declared a wetland, even though the Environmental Protection Agency went out there and took GPS locations and wrote it down in their book and put down flags that said wetland. Apparently, that wasn't registered as a wetland. I feel bad for the people that were here. Do good work. I know that when they came out and were forced to cement shut the drain across the street from my house, they knew that that would lead to problems. One of them even said, well, if you plug up a drain, the water does just disappear, and then looked at my house and said, oh, is that your house? Does that have a crawl space? Man, I am really sorry. I have to do what's in the work order. I can't do anything else, and I have my own family. And I told him he was right to choose his family over somebody he didn't know, but I think it's really unfortunate that people are forced to participate in something that they know is wrong. And if you go and look at that and you think that that's gonna still work with a height raised up three feet above the height of something 10 feet away from me, I'd like to know how that's gonna work. Thank you.
Mike Rowan.
Mike Rowan, 239 South Cove Terrace. I talked before about gaslighting, and some things piqued my interest, so I'm down to talk about gaslighting again. I think the easiest way to understand gaslighting is it's moving the goalposts. So things get brought up, and we think we've found something, and then we, later on, the goalpost seemed to move and something else pops up. In other words, opinions seem to change, and the whole idea is that we will forget exactly what happened. And speaking specifically about the boat ramp. Initially, we were told, we've been told things like the boat ramp will not go away unless there's another one downtown. We've been told things like the boat ramp won't go away unless there's so many boat ramps, nobody's gonna care. And I think at the last meeting, it was mentioned that there would be an alternative to the boat ramp, and we intend to keep a ramp downtown, and we need further dialogue. That's the last I remember from these meetings. So I thought that was all well and good. We've talked about not having something happen that we didn't know about. So I happened to go down to City Hall a few days ago, and if you walk in the front entrance to City Hall, you'll hear a mock, you'll see a mock-up of the P A E C. In other words, this is the Performing Arts Center, and it's got the Downtown Marina. And in this model, there's no boat ramp. So this appears to me to be a model for the future, and it doesn't look like there's a boat ramp. We've been told before that there's not any money and there's not any plans, so if there's not any money and not any plans, who's paying for these mock-ups of the Downtown Marina? And why in the mock-up is it showing that there's not gonna be a boat ramp? It looks like we need to probably come to the conclusion, the boat ramp is, according to this commission, the boat ramp appears to be gone, and I'm not sure there's plans for another one downtown. If any of y'all have any opinions or anything you want to say, I'm here to listen.
We're in the middle of working on Snug Harbor right now.
We boaters in the community don't think much of Snug Harbor. We think there needs to be one downtown, and we have been promised that there was gonna be one around downtown or downtown.
It's closer to the middle of the cove than the one is downtown.
It's closer to the middle of the cove? So is Snug Harbor...
And easier to get to. Instead of meandering through all the downtown area to get to a boat landing, it'd be easier to get to that one, because with everything going on downtown, everything being built downtown, it's gonna be very difficult to get a boat through all of that stuff, but that's just my opinion.
Right. So is Snug Harbor a substitute for downtown?
It helps.
Okay, I understand it helps. Is it a substitute for downtown?
Well, once we get Snug Harbor built, if we can find another place that's close to there, we'll try to do that, but right now, we're not closing the downtown until we've got enough places available. I mean, we went over this 500 times.
Right, and I still don't understand. Is downtown closed? Is Snug Harbor gonna be the substitute for downtown? Yes or no? Or maybe don't know?
We, listen, we don't even know where we're gonna build the Civic Center, Doc. You know that. We thought we were gonna get a lot of money from FEMA, and we're not. So we've got to, you know, we've got to get all those decisions made, and we can't until we get a funding source. It's difficult. I'm sorry.
So Snug Harbor is or isn't a substitute? It's a help? Is there gonna be one downtown?
That is downtown.
Snug Harbor's downtown?
Well, it's close to downtown, but it's close to the, it's closer to the middle of the cove than the one is downtown. And I just got through explaining again, and I don't want to get into this, Doc, I'm sorry to take up time, but to meander through all of the different roads to get to the Downtown Marina, it'll be easier to get to Snug Harbor. It's more protected. They'll have a freshwater washdown. We're done. I'm sorry.
In my opinion, you've cluttered up downtown intentionally so boats can't come through downtown.
Oh, come on. Can we go on, please? Thank you.
Thank you. The streets are awfully narrow downtown, and they're getting more narrow. That's not helpful for boats.
Now that he's sitting down, I would just like to state, I think everybody knows that I like the downtown boat ramp. Oh, don't come back, he'll get, you'll get in trouble. Don't come back. Don't come back.
You said you wanted some dialogue.
I didn't want a dialogue. I was just gonna make a statement to what you said.
Okay, well, let's get some dialogue going.
No, no dialogue.
We're all about it.
We're done.
That's why I'm here.
I know. Thank you, though. Thank you. So I think I've always said that, that I support the downtown boat ramp. But the other thing was, in his credit, that the Panama, the Civic Center, I forget what you call it, but the mold that we have in there, it might be, because we haven't made any decision on what's gonna go there, we probably shouldn't have something like that up, because in his defense, that's exactly what it looks like, because there is no boat ramp on there. I mean, I know that to us, we're like, it doesn't mean there's a decision made, but, you know, to maybe those that are sensitive about that, it may lead to whatever, so anyway.
Thank you. Just reiterate, I support fully the boat ramp staying. The only thing I'm willing to consider is another alternative that is directly adjacent to it in some way, so just to be clear.
We're working on it. Okay.
I've also said publicly, I want the boat ramp to stay too.
Jimmy?
More than once.
I would say Snug Harbor is looking very, very nice.
I'm excited about Snug Harbor.
And it's not a substitute, in my mind, it's not a substitute. It's adding more water access.
It's extra.
Hey, Jimmy.
Hey. How are you? Good. My name is Jimmy Siselski, 1208 Cherry, Panama City, 32401, and I have to agree with Doc Rohan on his comments. The, it looks to me that there were two commissioners that voted to keep the Civic Center where it was at, which knowingly, that it was some information passed to the architects and stuff, that the boat ramp would be relocated. It was in the documents on the, on the website, and also stated at the P A C after the meeting. All right, that's done. I, the question I had, what are the plans for the handrails on the T-Dot?
I think that's on the meeting. Isn't it one of the agenda items today? Partially, or something related to that?
Only around the...
It's the beginning of it.
Oh, the promenade. The promenade of the, we'll be talking about that for the promenade, yes.
So what are, what are the plans for the handrails on the promenade?
We're voting on that today, I believe.
Yes, we are.
We'll talk about that.
When we get to that item, you know, I think it's best...
Are we gonna use the millions of dollars that were received from FEMA and the insurance to pay for that?
Who are you asking?
Well, I think we'll talk about that when we get to the promenade.
What agenda item is...
The other question is, why did we use reserve funds to build the handrail on the St. Joey Leaks and not the FEMA and insurance? That was gonna be earmarked for some other things. The T-Dot's been closed for over four years. Hard-working taxpayers, it is time to open up the dock and the green space. There is a green space out there, so you'll solve two problems. You'll have a green space, and you'll have public access. The dock, are y'all against public access? The commissioners, are y'all?
We're building another boat ramp.
Heck, no.
We're trying to...
I'm talking about the boat ramp. I'm talking about the T-Dot in the grass.
Heck, no.
I think the best thing to do, because I have, Mark and I walked the T-Dot the other day, is that we were gonna, I'm assuming we would talk about that in 7B.
Yep.
And he could give, Mark could give probably the best explanation, but if we go back and forth, it'll just take forever, so. Then on top of that, when we talk about the Civic Center, we can talk about what the, what options we'll have then and how we're gonna fund things.
It's all on the agenda, Jimmy.
All right. The thing is, is I don't see what all's been benefited from that $10 million we've received. The only people that have benefited were consultants, engineers, architects, and planners. What have the taxpayers benefited? None, that I can see, it's the same as it was. Is the forensic audit gonna include the insurance and FEMA monies today on the Marina monies? I know we're having a forensic audit.
No.
Why not?
It has nothing to do with that.
How can we get what has been spent and what has been received from FEMA and the insurance and where it was spent? Some people have asked, but they got an incomplete answer. One more thing real quick. What are the plans for the new parking lot at the Marina?
Thank you.
Talk about that, too.
We're gonna talk about all of that. Thanks, Jimmy. Thanks, Jimmy. Okay. 7A?
Thank you.
Devin?
First item that I have is a final reading and it'll be a public hearing on ordinance 3126, a no-wake zone in flooded streets. There were a few changes, but nothing substantive to the last draft that you had. But, this gives a mechanism and a tool to slow people down when the streets are flooded and they, which would create wakes and potentially cause damage to neighboring buildings that are there. So, the final reading of the ordinance includes these revisions to the enforcement procedure to match the legislative intent. Enforcement method has been revised to be through code enforcement citation summons process by paying the $250 fine within 30 days or contesting through a hearing in front of the special magistrate. This is a public hearing.
Would you like to address us on this issue? Okay, I'm here. Oh, go ahead.
O P N, 614 May Avenue. Appreciate you, the, all your comments that you have given today. First time I hear that, that y'all was trying to give folks some answers on flooding. How you gonna find somebody if you're not there when these things happen? Somebody running through the water? You don't have it barricaded off where they can get into the other lane? Folks go run through water. Some folks are going to slow down. Some folks are not gonna slow down. They're gonna continue their pace they're going. Folks walking, they gonna get wet or whatever. But, I just, I just wonder how you gonna make these things go, that you gonna find somebody when you're not, when you're not there at, at the place that these things happen? What we need to do, I think we, sometimes we, when these things are ice, somebody, I know even the commission, commissioner, if it's in your area, somebody don't have enough to, to go out, look at it. If the people that you have in charge don't have that, they don't, you're, you're here for the people. Sometimes those you have in charge, they're just sitting there, not caring what's going on in the city and around the city. But, somehow you need to go out and look at it and see for yourself what's going on. Take it back. You shouldn't have to. But, sometimes it takes that to, to get things done, action happening. It's not enough action going. We're hearing, but who are, who are going out there being concerned, caring about these things that you, that we're talking about? You don't care, it gonna continue to happen. Folks gonna continue to complain and they gonna continue to come to you with their complaint, but that's who they should bring it to, is you. So, if the city manager's not able to handle his, handle his people that he have put in charge to do the thing that they should do, I think sometimes you need to, you need to put your foot down.
Thank you, Mr. Henry.
So, that's a great question. We've got a change here since last week. It's code enforcement instead of traffic citation. I do have, are we gonna deploy code enforcement officers during flooded events? I didn't understand what the change was about.
It's, it's more the end result. Instead of going to traffic court, it would still be in all probability a police officer. And then it would just be in front of the magistrate instead of in front of a local judge or a traffic court.
Understood. So, to answer your question, Mr. Henry, it's a, it's the police that would essentially enforce.
Okay. Your motion on 3126?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Call Rowan?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
The next item is a-
We gotta read the-
I, I would like to read the ordinance title.
We would like you to read it.
Thank you. Ordinance number 3126, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Panama City, Bay County, Florida, amending chapter 22, traffic and vehicles, Article 3, vehicle operation of the general ordinances, creating no wake speed zones in flooded streets, providing an enforcement procedure repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for the severance of any part of this ordinance declared invalid, providing for an effective date. Next item is a proposed budget resolution for, concerning the construction of the promenade at Panama City Marina. This is Panama, the St. Joe Company is leasing, has a long-term lease with Panama City and upon the long-term lease, they have built Harrison's, the restaurant, and they are building a hotel, which will be completed this year. And part of the agreement was that while they were building the hotel, they would also build a promenade, which is public space around the, around the, the seawall there on the Marina. And the, they would, the lease calls for them getting proposals. They have received two proposals. They are recommending that they hire Cardella Construction Company, which is the same company that is building the hotel. And the cost of that is, plus the engineering, is 845,310. And there's a letter exchange and two excerpts from the lease that explain how this process works. There's already money in the Marina Fund to pay for this and the recommendation, though, is to budget it for this fiscal year. Upon completion and acceptance, the city would then pay and accept the promenade from the St. Joe Company. Their recommendation is to approve the budget amendment.
Questions?
Go ahead, Mark. Do some, let me-
Yeah. So, thank you very much. So, the, in an effort to try to get access to the T dock, first of all, this has been a process that we've been going through with regard to the promenade. And trying to get the promenade constructed as the first piece of the totality of the promenade that'll go all the way around the perimeter of the T dock and the base of the Marina. The, the design was finally settled on with regard to the walkability, the bikeability, the landscaping. And one of the key features was the railing. This, in this case, the railing is one, the original proposal that was submitted to us was gonna be somewhere around $8 million to do the perimeter of the totality of the T dock, which was obviously unacceptable. So, we had the engineers and architects go back and reevaluate and they came back with an alternative, which we think is in the best interest of our citizens, which allows for an aesthetic. It is a railing system that has the stainless steel wiring that goes horizontally at various levels all the way through the railing. And with that, it makes it much more palatable for us to be able to look at doing that and continuing it all the way around the T. This action is only for that portion of the promenade that will be constructed to include the sidewalk parts and the landscaping parts that will go around the hotel all the way up to the restaurant. What I'm gonna be doing separately is working with the contractor to gain a price to go and continue to do that railing up the, the base of the T, possibly around the, the branches of the T to come back down to the base adjacent to where the Harrison's Restaurant is. Once I get that price and proposal, I'll be bringing that back to the City Commission. The idea, as you shared, Commissioner Halagus, is that as we walk that totality of that space is to make it more usable for our citizens without putting significant investment in there. Because we do know there's gonna be a lot of construction that's gonna be going on out on that T with the wet slip construction and the fuel docks and all, and the other fish cleaning stations and all those types of things. So, with that, I'll be coming back to you with a separate proposal for the, what we can do on the base of the T, all the way out to the T itself. That will continue that same aesthetic. It would not be the finished walkway until we get the final construction of the Marina done.
Right. So, and this will maybe help them and anybody else. So, just to be clear, this promenade starts basically where destination Panama City?
Right.
It would come up the side of the hotel, turn and go in front of and finish right before you would turn to go towards the T?
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Um, and so, and it's benches, bike racks, lighting, palm trees?
Vegetation.
The whole thing. And what a lot of people don't know is that we got our first conversations back, it was just for that section, which is what, I must say 1,100 linear feet or some, 11, sorry. Yeah.
1,100?
1,100 linear feet. Is, was that, I mean, we're, it was like 1.8 million or something, just for that part. And I have to give Mark a lot of credit for that because he kept going back, well, what can we do different? What can we, and not sacrifice design. Also, if y'all can remember, I mean, it's been a long journey, but we did all that visioning process and this is exactly what sent, when we adopted the, the vision, this was, this is what the community wanted. So, that's really exciting. There's also a, an area that's not just the walkway, that's, that's a civic area as well between, a little smaller, but like, more like a plaza that's in between there. I'll try to post some kind of drawings or maybe we can add that to our website. And we have not voted, of course, on the rest of the T dock and all of that stuff, 'cause we know all the construction. But, begging and pleading and Mark understanding that was, we went, we walked the T dock and said, okay, what could we do that we could open this up? Because it's gonna be a while before all the slips are constructed and all of those things, that we can get people and we can use that green space that's out there. And so, you know, basically what he's doing is looking back at this, this railing company and seeing if we can't at least, at least do most of the rest of it. We may not be able to go all the way on the Ts. There may be some there, but I'm tired of seeing construction fence, just like everybody else is. And the lights may be doing solar or some other options that are not the full electricity and all the costs that goes into that just to get it open. And, you know, seeding and feeding the grass, the grass space that is there so that we can have something decent down there. My, my only other request to him was, you know, we, there's an area of, of drawings that we've kinda, and once again, no one's voted on those drawings, but it's a general idea that people want open space and the, you know, a promenade walkway and bathrooms and, I can't do those yet, but bathrooms and the kid, well, we would, maybe. But, anyway. I'm worried about the family events, like what we talked about with, you know, kids activities there. But, it's possible, maybe, we'll look into it to see if we can't still fit that part in without having to do the whole thing. So, anyway, definitely wanna activate it and, and that's the goal. So, just for the rest of you, 'cause I know you didn't walk with us, that, that happened maybe two weeks ago, that we were, so I'm assuming you're working on all that now.
So, during Mark and I's conversation, just to kinda share what we've talked about, and we didn't walk, but I think that the railing price that came in here, I think everybody's happy with, it may be $500,000 to go around the entire T.
And that would just be amazing.
What's really important to the fishermen is to get out to the T because that's where they fish off of. It's not gonna do any good to fish inside the basin.
Right.
So, as far as lighting goes, just to save costs, do a dawn-to-dusk closeout, just like we do at every other park. And you're, you're open and ready for people to access. 'Cause it will be a long time before there's slips.
It's gonna be a long time. And so, it's, and then Mark, you talked about keeping the crushed rock in that area so people can drive down there and fish and, you know, those kinda things. So, we are really, we do really think it's important to open it up too. And so, that's where we are, as far as I know, on that part. Okay.
Good. Anyone else?
I am thrilled that, that, I'm thrilled that we can do this for this price and that the money comes from the Marina Funds for this. And to get started on this will be wonderful. People are wanting to use the Marina, be able to fish, be able to take walks, take strolls and enjoy the sunset. And that's-
I hate to say baby steps, but it's baby steps. And we got it. I mean, that's-
But, I will say this, it's, I also wanna make note that this, that the railing has a, a lifetime work.
And to that, this is not unlimited funding. And we've got a shortfall now at St. Andrews that we just found out about. And so, if we're gonna get slips activated in the community, we've gotta start putting investment into it, out of our own pocket. And so, so this is a great start. It's a great holding place. And if we can get the railing all the way around, I think it's a big win for the community.
Yeah, me too.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We've been having a problem with this Marina ever since the day that we first found out that we was filling it in to make it. And one thing has been going on, it's only gotten better, it's never gotten worse. So, I think we doing great. I think we should keep on going the way we going and stay positive. We don't need negativity anytime, especially now.
And I'd just like to touch base on the money, too. I mean, I, I know that there's, we had some money in the, in the Marina at the time of the hurricane, which was clearly used towards the bulkheads and all of that, which looked fantastic also, by the way, with my wall around that. But, the, but also, like, we, I mean, some people have talked about how some of the money's been used at St. Andrews. And those are both city Marinas. So, I'm just gonna go ahead and put that on the, on the table there. Like, just like you said, if we can get those slips activated, we'll have slips activated somewhere. And it's a, all of those assets belong to the entire, you know, city and the citizens. So, you know, we're just gonna have to get it done with, with what we've got. So, okay.
Motion on 7B?
Y'all know I am. Motion.
I'll second her motion.
Any other discussion? Sure. Come on up.
Try and look past the gator on this shirt.
First of all, this agenda item, it, on the agenda, it shows the letter and it shows the documentation from the attorney and all that stuff. But, the diagrams are all in landscape. So, that means if you're looking at it on your computer, and I've talked about this before, it means you gotta turn your head sideways. So, my first beef is, why can't we put this-
You can actually turn the document.
Pardon me?
You can turn your document. It's a little icon on your computer. I can show you.
You might have to update your software, Doc.
Am I not talking into this thing?
Yeah. We hear you.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. So, the letter comes out, the letter's in landscape. If you wanna read all the diagrams that are on this letter, you gotta turn your head sideways. Why can't we put them on, why can't we put them on the pictorial way so everybody can just look at them? That's, that's small, but I think it's important. Okay, this promenade is gonna go basically around St. Joe property. St. Joe's done a great job down there, got a good-looking hotel, got a good-looking restaurant. But, it's an, it's awfully expensive. It, we're $800-something thousand. Okay, so, first of all, I don't blame St. Joe for wanting something fancy around their property. Does it have to be that fancy? That's the first question. The next question is, we got 2.2 million in Marina Reserve and I think Mr. Street wants to split that in half, which means we got 1.1 million. We're gonna use just about all the 1.1 million on this. So, I would think we would wanna look at financing this thing. That would be one option. Or the other option would be paying St. Joe over time and letting them finance it. And the rest, we're talking about the rest of the guardrail around there. The rest of the guardrail does not have to be anywhere near that fancy. The rest of the guardrail, it just needs to be a rail, maybe with a little concrete walkway, similar to what it used to be. Because people drive down there, they park their cars and they sit and watch the sea, maybe fish for some of the, what is it, the squid that come in there.[1735.22] So, we, we need to get around the whole Marina. It doesn't have to be near as fancy as what's going around the hotel. I think it's great, it is nice around the hotel. But we don't have the money. We only have one point one million dollars and it's gonna eat almost all of it up right now. So I think we need to find a way to not eat that up. And we need to find a way to put a rail around the rest of the whole Marina. And it doesn't need to be, it needs to be a functional sort of a guardrail. It doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to have all the bells and whistles. It doesn't have to have all the plants, landscape and all that stuff. It needs to be sort of a bare minimum to get started so people can get down there and take advantage.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Doc.
Appreciate you.
Are we gonna go with the fancy thing? Are we gonna go with something simple or do we not know?
We cut back so much, you have no idea.
Yeah. We, we really hammered it, so.
But we, you know what, our citizens deserve still something that's nice. And I'm not, I'm not backing off that part, so.
Thank you.
I think we deserve something functional.
Thank you. Nice, nice and functional.
Functional and something affordable that, and I mean, we, we eaten all the money up on this thing.
To, to the two point two, I spent all of it on the downtime Marina, I don't care. But at the end of the day, like, like St. Andrews has got a giant budget gap that was not communicated at the beginning of the project, that needs to be addressed and it needs to be funded so we can get in construction and get off our bid docs next month. So, I mean, have at it, but it's a problem.
We're good. It's everybody's Marinas, both of those belong to us.
Good. So, as far as I'm concerned, we can go all the way around with railing.
Well, we still can.
We can do all of that with the funding that's there. The biggest thing is I just want slips to get activated in the community.
Now, we can, what we're looking at is that it looks like we will be able to go around. That's what we just said, I thought, before we were voting on that. And that you want the continuity of a railing to get, from a design perspective, it's, you would never hodgepodge something on such a beautiful piece of property. It needs to be pleasant to people. But it does look like we have the money, hopefully. We don't know for sure, because you're still working on that. But it looks like we'll have the money continue the railing, just not the promenade. Just get it open and activated.
Derek, do you wanna address this?
Great idea.
Thanks, Doc.
The only thing I would like to add is safety is an issue. Safety is, that's, is very, safety is very.
Derek, would you like to address this?
Safety for children. We wouldn't want, want any children falling through, getting brownie, for sure.
Derek, Thomas, eleven hundred West Town Street. I noticed in the lease agreement that nobody's allowed to use their, the parking provided for the, for the hotel and the, and the restaurant until after the parking for, at the T dock is finished. So the public won't be able to use the green space if we're gonna have a green space unless there's someplace to park. I remember living here back when you, we're talking about bringing in foot traffic to downtown and you tore up the parking lot that was there and left it just a bunch of, you know, not even grass, didn't even put down grass seed. But if that is gonna be a useful space, and I, I liked the idea of having an outdoor musical venue, someplace where we could go and watch the sunset and listen to music. But unless there is a finished T dock, there's not gonna be any place for the public to park, to use that. So, rather than wait however many years until after the railing's built and then after the parking lot's built before anybody can use the outdoor venue to listen to a concert or something, I think that that needs to be considered.
I just want, I just want to add, Mark, oh, you can go back, I just wanted to, you know, that was what Mark's concern was. He was like, I wanna do this, I wanna activate this. We put the fence though and then someone's complaining, we don't have that or we don't have restrooms. But we've gotta start the process of building and going back. If there's not enough parking, you have to park behind Trustmark and walk over there, then, you know, if you gotta take a bike or you do, or you just don't go, I don't know. But we'll, we're gonna touch on parking, I would assume, when we get to the Civic Center. Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
While you're tearing this all down, if the boat ramp was there, that did bring a lot of traffic to downtown.
Boat ramp still will be there.
Yeah, well, I mean, while you're, you're tearing down, demolishing this building and, and putting up a, a walkway around the outside of it.
We'll talk, we'll, we'll get to that. I think that's next to last. Thank you. I thought the promenade would be so, the promenade is such a good.
Walter P. Henry, six fourteen Maple Avenue. I agree with you that we need some beautification in Panama City. Folks come here, they wanna see something. They don't wanna look at something. You might be, some of us might be satisfied with what we have. I'm really not. We done lost a lot. Beach done took a lot from Panama City. We keep on running, we gonna be the ghost town of the city. So we, I agree, we need to have something nice. Not for us, but somebody else that come is in here, that they be, they be willing to come in because they got something that they're willing, that looks good, and they willing to be there. But we got to draw folks into Panama City. Now, we are, I admit, I know that everybody is different, everybody feel difference about things. Nobody gonna feel the same way. But we need, Panama City need to be, need be growing better than what it is. We should be better. You've been great one time, we can be that way again. We got to put our minds on not ourselves. Some of us are old, you're not gonna get any younger. But you got other young folks coming behind us. It's a future for them.
Thank you, Mr. Henry.
Thank you.
That was very insightful.
Jimmy.
Go ahead, Jimmy.
Jimmy Sosowski, twelve oh eight Cherry, Panama City, three two four oh one. I don't see where parking is a big issue. According to the contract, we don't build a, a parking lot adjacent to the St. Joe parking lot. In return, we can use their parking lot and ours, as long as access is through the promenade. They have a hundred and ninety-four parking places and I don't know how many are we don't build. And where?
I'm not sure, but you're right, there is cross parking, so.
Yes. So there's a hundred and ninety-four, and y'all should know how many parking and the location that we're gonna build it. Where's it gonna be and the loc, you know, how many?
We can talk about that when we get to Civic Center, but I don't, we have.
No, it has nothing to do with Civic Center.
It actually does.
Well, it's adjacent, it's adjacent to St. Joe's parking lot and is required by the contract. And there's, it should be that y'all already have approved plans for it because it says in the contract, per approved plans. So, parking on the T dock, you got a hundred and ninety-four, and I don't know if y'all build another eighty or a hundred next to St. Joe's. There's plenty of parking and there's an approved path to the T dock and the grass area.
Yeah, I'm not worried about parking.
There's no issue on parking, that's correct.
I hope I have a problem.
So we need, we need to go ahead and open up the T dock. When you go to the beach, you don't drive your vehicle to the water. Walk. People can park in a parking lot and walk down there.
That's right.
People have gotten spoiled, you know, I mean, but we need to open it up for the public. And then there's no rush to tear down the Marina and make a, a green space. Anyway, the functions that we do on the green space are very limited. St. Joe says you can have three events a year for a duration of four days total. So you can't even have a farmer's market down there because you compete with St. Joe. You can't have stages with music because they've already in their contract, they have it, that they have a right to be quiet down there. You can't sell food, you can't have food trucks, they even specify on the contract, food trucks, three times a year. That's it. That's it. You can't have all this stuff people are saying we can have, it's in the contract. We're very limited. So a green space should be just a green space, somebody go out there and throw a frisbee or fish. But we can't do all this stuff y'all are talking about, it's restricted. We don't have the rights to use that green space any way we want. Thank you.
We'll talk about that when we get to the Civic Center.
Okay, motion on seven B?
Got a motion in a second.
Call roll?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Commission has adopted Resolution number twenty twenty-three oh one two four point five. A resolution providing for the amendment of the approved fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three budget for construction of a promenade in accordance with the Marina lease approved plans. The next item is consideration of a resolution to place a referendum question, ballot question on the April election. It's for EVLOREM tax exemptions. A tax attached for your consideration is a resolution regarding a referendum for tax exemptions for new and expanding businesses. The city commission has the authority, has all cities and the county, county commissions across state of Florida, to grant such an exemption for new, new businesses and expansion of existing businesses. This granting will go, will provide for ten years. This is not automatic. It is, a business has to qualify, they have to apply, there'll be a public hearing and then an ordinance is adopted granting that tax exemption. This failed at the last election and the, the request is to consider placing it again on the election for this year. It had been approved for over thirty years prior to the last election. We have here in the audience Becca Harden, as well as, with the EDA and Joe Holt with the Chamber of Commerce. I believe Mayor would like to address the commission.
Come forward.
Good morning, Honorable Mayor and members of the commission. I'm Becca Harden, I'm the president of the Bay Economic Development Alliance. Yesterday, we had a German advanced manufacturer in Panama City. Your team member, Gray Dodge, helped us with a site visit at the port-owned intermodal distribution center. That project would bring seven hundred and thirty new jobs to Panama City with a capital investment of fifty million dollars. It's critical that we continue to have tools in our toolbox. And this tax exemption is an incentive that we can offer to help bring companies to Panama City. It was unfortunate at the last election that it did not get passed. And I believe it got tied up with some other things on the ballot that, and people just misunderstood because, as the attorney said, that it's been approved for the past thirty years and it's been an excellent tool in helping to bring jobs to Panama City. I ask you, as, as the commission, to please approve this referendum to go on the ballot in April. And we look forward to continuing to bring international and domestic projects to Panama City, Florida. Thank you.
Thank you, Becca. I think it was confusing because Lynn Haven passed it, the county passed it, and for whatever reason, ours was just, it just got confused with something else and, so.
Well, that's a referendum.
Yeah.
It's not like we're making the decision, we're just allowing the citizens to make the decision.
Exactly.
Good morning, Mayor, commissioners. I appreciate your time this morning. I'm Joe Holt, I'm the chairman-elect for the Bay County Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. And what I'd like to say this morning is the chamber supports approving the resolution that requests the referendum for property tax exemption to new and expanded businesses be placed on the April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three ballot. Compared to Georgia and Alabama, Florida has very limited economic development tools. It's very important to give municipalities and other organizations like the EDA and Becca resources they can leverage to bring not only new businesses to PC, but also have current businesses expanding. This is a very common practice for cities in Florida to offer property tax exemptions like this to attract new businesses. Panama City voters, like Mr. Nevin said, had previously approved the exemption for over thirty years, but it failed to pass in the two thousand twenty-one municipality elections. The Chamber Board of Directors also commits their support to help educate voters to understand the importance of this tool when promoting and growing economic development in Panama City. So thank you for your time and thank y'all for your service.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do for the chamber too.
So this is a vote to put it back on the, up to the voters. I mean, we're not voting to do it. So I hear a motion on seven D or C?
I'll move a motion to put it on the ballot.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion, call roll?
Except to the citizens.
Yep.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Commission has adopted Resolution number twenty twenty-three oh one two four point seven. A resolution of the city of Panama City, Florida requesting the supervisor of elections place a question on the general election ballot for tax exemptions. The next item we have is a little bit of a cleanup item. It is to approve a continuing service contract task order with Baskerville Donovan. We inadvertently, I inadvertently left the contract off the approval from the last meeting. If you'll notice at the last meeting, the letter is attached, they were listed on the map, but they were failed to be listed in the letter when we approved six other contracts with other engineering firms. This is State Revolving Fund, it's water and sewer. And our request is that you approve the contract task order with Baskerville Donovan as it relates to phase two of SRF project.
Motion on seven D?
I'd like to move approval to this.
Second to motion, Mayor.
Discussion, call roll?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Next item is the, for the city commission to consider approving a letter for the mayor to sign to send to our legislative delegation concerning no objection to the proposed special act legislation for a Sweet Bay stewardship district. We have here today William Harrison, attorney for Sweet Bay, and Will Randall, their executive director, that is here. This is to create a community development district that is more robust than you can create just simply through Florida statute. Cities and counties can create community development districts which are primarily created as financing tools for infrastructure. This would have nothing to do with the existing Sweet Bay community as far as the homes that have already been built and sold or platted. This relates only to the undeveloped portion. This is, the city is really not a player in this, other than as a matter of courtesy. It is important for Senator Trumbull and Representative Griffiths to know that we have no objection. If there is a relationship, and I'm sure there will be a relationship, with the new community development district with Panama City, it will be negotiated separately in the future and it'll be subject to an interlocal agreement. There's nothing in this special act that dictates anything about how we will respond to them in the future. But we do know that Sweet Bay has been a tremendous, tremendous development for Panama City. And they are anxious to keep moving forward as quickly as possible. And that is the, behind the basis of their request for a community development district on the unimproved area of Sweet Bay. And if you have any questions, Mr. Harrison and Mr. Randall are here that can address that.
I think you said it best.
Yeah, I think you probably explained it as well as it need to be explained. Unless there are, if there are no questions, I, do hear a motion on seven E?
I'll be happy to make the motion, but I want everybody to understand, because I've asked this many, many times, this is no tax on the city or anybody else.
That's correct.
It's only on the people that will buy property at Sweet Bay in the future. And if you already own a home in Sweet Bay and you, when you sell your home, your grandfather again, that, that property's not taxed on this. So this is strictly as something that they want to do and it's, and a lot of cities, towns and villages in the state of Florida do this. And I'm very familiar with it and it is in my ward and I've always supported Sweet Bay and what they wanted. And I wanna make that note. So I make the motion.
Unless they want, unless, William, would y'all like to say?
If you wanna, if I didn't say it right, y'all can.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Here, I had a motion.
He got a second.
We got a second, any other discussion, call a roll?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Next item is eight A, consideration to approve amendment number two to the paymentist agreement to provide electronic bill payment services for the city. As background information, on January thirteenth, two thousand fifteen, the city entered into the original agreement with paymentist. The original agreement provided for a convenience fee to be charged to each customer. Under that model, the convenience fee pricing model, the maximum payment amount was limited to one hundred and sixty dollars per transaction. This is payment for utility bills. Since Hurricane Michael, the city's been absorbing the convenience fee. Under this model, the absorbed fee pricing model, the maximum payment amount is increased to nine hundred dollars per transaction. The change in the pricing model is estimated to affect between twenty-five hundred and three thousand customers per month. Additionally, by extending the contract by three years, the price per transaction is lower for utility bill payments. This will result in a savings to the city of approximately twenty thousand dollars per year. Staff recommends approval of the amendment two to the paymentist agreement to provide electronic bill payment services to the city.
Okay, so this was on the last meeting, we've got this squared away. All right, motion on eight A?
I'll make a motion, but I'd also like to have a little bit of dialogue too.
Okay.
I'll second.
Go ahead.
Just as an order of business, if we make sure that we get these contracts prior to their triggering the renewal, that would be just a great piece. This really wasn't an option for us to look at other options because we were already inside of the cancellation window. I do wanna add though, in, in light of that meeting with Jan, and it is a better deal for the city than what we have today. So, I mean, so we're definitely moving forward with a, with cost savings as well and look forward to getting even more in the future.
Call a roll?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes 5-0.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I draw your attention to Item 9A, which is Final Reading Ordinance 3135.1 of the voluntary annexation of 1.12 acres of property located at 4023 West 24th Street. As background information, the applicant requests the subject property be annexed into the city, designated general commercial on the future land use map, and zone general commercial, too. This item was reviewed by the Planning Board on December 12, 2022, and the Planning Board recommended approval unanimously. With that, it's recommended that we conduct the final reading of the ordinance. This is a public hearing.
Anyone like to address us on 9A? Seeing no one, hear a motion on Ordinance 3135.1.
I'd like to move approval.
I'll second the motion, Mayor.
Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Commission has adopted Ordinance 3135.1, an ordinance of the city approving the voluntary annexation of 1.12 acres of unincorporated property located at 4023 West 24th Street, parcel identified into the city as further defined here and after amending the wards and boundaries of the city to include said land and providing for an effective date.
Item 9B is a final reading, Ordinance 3135.2, amending the future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of general commercial for a property located at 4023 West 24th Street. As background information, it's the same as I shared in the annexation agenda request, and with that, it's recommended that we conduct the final reading of the ordinance.
Anyone like to address us on this? Hear a motion on Ordinance 3135.2.
No motion to approve.
I'll second.
No text found of that location.
I guess that was the third discussion, call the roll.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Commission has approved Ordinance 3135.2, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of general commercial for parcels of property located at 4023 West 24th Street, parcels identified Panama City, Florida, providing for repealer, severability, and providing for an effective date.
Item 9C is final reading, Ordinance 3135.3, amending the zoning map of the city to reflect a zoning designation of general commercial, too, for the property located at 4023, 4023 West 24th Street. As background information, it's the same as I shared earlier in the annexation agenda request, and with that, we recommend conducting the final reading of the ordinance.
Anyone like to address us? Hear a motion on 3135.3.
Motion to approve.
I'll second. Commissioner Street's motion.
Discussion, call the roll.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Commission has adopted Ordinance Number 3135.3, an ordinance zoning a parcel of property located at 4023 West 24th Street, parcel identified Panama City, Florida, having approximately 1.12 acres GC2, providing for severability and effective date.
Item 9D is the final reading, Ordinance 3136.1, amending the future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of mixed use for the property located at 1504 Mulberry Avenue. As background information, applicant has requested a land use and zoning change to the mixed use land use category and mixed use two zoning district. This item was reviewed by the Planning Board on December 12, 2022, and the Planning Board recommended approval unanimously. With that, it's recommended that we conduct the final reading of the ordinance. This does continue the public hearing.
Anyone like to address us? Hear a motion on 3136.1?
I'll move a motion to approve.
Second a motion, Mayor.
Discussion, call the roll.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Commission has adopted Ordinance 3136.1, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of mixed use for a parcel of property located at 1504 Mulberry Avenue, parcel number Panama City, Florida, providing for repealer, severability, and effective date.
Item 9E is the final reading of Ordinance 3136.2, amending the zoning map of the city to reflect a zoning designation of mixed use two, MU2, for the property located at 1504 Mulberry Avenue. As background information, it's the same as I shared in the future land use agenda requests, and with that, we recommend that you conduct the final reading of the ordinance.
Hear a motion on 3136.2?
Oh, I'll move the motion, sorry.
Second.
I'm sorry.
Discussion, call the roll.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Commission has adopted Ordinance 3136.2, an ordinance zoning a parcel of property located at 1504 Mulberry Avenue, Panama City, Florida, having approximately .258 acres mixed use two, providing for severability and effective date.
You've got four items on a consent agenda. Anyone like to discuss those separately, otherwise entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll move a motion to approve the whole consent agenda.
Second a motion, Mayor.
Discussion, call the roll.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would like to take my leave at this time.
Okay.
With some business and.
All right, gotta leave. Okay.
Your wife.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I draw your attention to Item 11A, which is regarding the Hometown Revitalization Program. I've invited Jennifer Aldrich to come forward and give a presentation with regard to this great program that we have available, insisting her will be lead, so thank you very much, both.
Oh, good morning. So excited to finally present this to y'all on the Hometown Revitalization and where we are and how, what we've got to come up to and the status of it. This is our agenda for the presentation. It'll be really quick. This is the program overview. As you know, Governor DeSantis came in in August of 2021 and announced $13.4 million for this program for building and facade improvements, and it's, the big thing is, is this is a pilot program, so this is the first time this has been presented to the state of Florida, so we're very excited that we are the pilot program for this, and DEO is very excited about this program as well. And just so you know, it's, DEO makes the eligibility determinations. The city did not make these determinations whatsoever, that's some of the businesses that were approved and everything like that. So, we just do the program. We just help manage it and everything like.
Just to make that clear.
Yes, just to make that clear. And we just, so you know, we did reach out to quite a few to prevent this program, to get applications and intake. We did public meetings. We did four, two at City Hall, one at AD Harris, and also at the publishing museum. This was also done through Zooms, so if people weren't available in person, they were able to do it through the Zoom. And we did this, that's the Chamber, did it through the Chamber of Commerce, social media, went door to door on the main corridors. We just wanted to, so if we didn't make it on Jinx on Harrison, it doesn't, it still wasn't like, it wasn't the Jinx on, a business on Jinx wasn't eligible. We just didn't, we just did the main corridors. And we also communicated through email as well. This is the timeline. It first started, we started in January 2021 through the, to April, and of course, this went through April. We had to, so pilot program, so it was new, so a lot of things came up throughout the process of getting the applications to get the award amount. So, things have changed since then. Then we submitted the projects, and then the governor came to the city and made his announcement for the $13.4 million, which was a very exciting date. And then we started, we got the agreements in April, and we were able to, we weren't allowed to do any, any intake interviews until we had those executed agreements. And we went through a few months of intake agreements through all the businesses that were on the sub-agreements for Phase One, and then, so as of right now, we are in the process of, and we'll show you, the businesses got our status of approval and which one are still pending approval. And again, this, we just want to reiterate that this all revolves around DEO's approval, so we're just implementing the program. So, we have gone through eligibility review, and we are fixing to go through design phase, and I'm going to turn it over to Lee because he is going to be the Phase Two of this project.
Thanks, Jennifer. My name is Lee Waller. I'm the Project Manager with the City of Panama City. I'll be looking over the construction portion of our Phase Two of the Hometown Revitalization project. As you can see, we've gone through the intake and application portion. Again, you have to go through DEO to have their approval of eligibility. You can see with project design, we're at our current status, and again, we'll have to go through that process again as pilot program, so we've got a, we're got the, everything with DEO as we go along. Here you see the list of eligible activities that have been approved by DEO and through Next, we'll look at the participation status. You can see here how many businesses are registered, how many are approved, and we still have a few businesses that we're working to have approved through DEO, so there's a little, some questions the DEO has asked of the city and of the businesses, and so With our dispersment of grant funding, we just came up on the best applicable way to provide funding for these businesses and ran through DEO and had their approval on it. So, here you see the formula, how we broke that out to these businesses. And there will be a letter being sent out to the approved businesses with the funding Moving forward with our estimated timeline, we've got our, just completed our intake phase. We're moving into round, round one, design phase. We'll be doing more one-on-one interviews with the approved businesses and beginning design and then construction, and then we'll be looking forward to our round two with businesses that either were not able to get in on round one or any additional funding that would be available.
You're good. I know it's a big overhaul.
Question?
So, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, first of all, thank you both, Jennifer and Lee, for working this program and our team from Hagerty that's been in support of this. It's been a remarkable journey, and certainly, I think that as we've come out of Hurricane Michael, there's a lot of firsts that are happening, and very grateful to Governor DeSantis and, in this case, Director Eagle from DEO, who really saw a way to help create a catalytic redevelopment in blighted spaces. And so, in each one of these CRA spaces, this money is going to be deployed. It's been a very dynamic process. This is now going to become a pilot, not just a pilot, but it's going to be executed down into the area that Hurricane Irma did. So, we're plowing the way for other communities within Florida to benefit from the discoveries that have been made from this. I want to thank Commissioner Street and Commissioner Halagus for their one-on-one times that we've had with DEO and their members that have come down episodically over the last year. And we anticipate, as Lee shared, that those letters of what the max award will be will be going out to each of the business owners. The business owners will decide how to deploy the dollars, what they want, what are their priorities to get accomplished. It'll also allow for about a 10% overage that they can fund into it, that the contractor, who is going to be contracted by the city to execute. There's no out-of-pocket money from the business owner unless they go beyond their max award. So, this is good news. This is going to really revitalize and stimulate a lot of our small and large and medium-sized businesses that are in our communities, and I think that we'll see over the next year a really a significant movement forward in each of these areas. We appreciate the business owners that have participated and have been going through this journey with us. It's been very arduous, but at the end of the day, they're going to be the recipients of a great grant that's going to help their, stimulate their business even further.
Don't they have to spend the money first and then get reimbursed?
No.
No, it's not the same as with us.
The city spends it. The applicant does not. A city is spending it on their behalf, and then we claim reimbursement. So, this is a good news story for a small business, getting capital improvements done at no out-of-pocket to them.
Doesn't work like FEMA.
No, sir. Go ahead. Ms. Halagus?
Yeah, I have two questions. One, when will it be made open to the public how much each business is awarded?
Yeah, those letters will be going out this week, and it'll, we're just waiting to get those letters released.
I just didn't know, you know, some people might just like a, you know, a list of all of them, just curious, you know, to see what, is that something that we, that we'll get? When will that be available to us as Commissioners as well?
So, we wanted to, definitely we talked to the business owners first before, you know, and then, of course, right after that.
Okay. I was just wondering how long it'd be. The second part is, you know, I'm always looking, and I don't want to go around the system, but I'm always looking at what's going to clog it up, what's going to take so much time in the red tape. How is the contract, how are the contractors, like, you're going to meet, because I know that there's going to be a process that they're going to, you know, hey, this is what I need. I also know that, like, some of these things aren't, like, let's say you want a new facade. That person who owns that business may not have the creativity or the vision or the ability to draw their concept. Will there be someone to sketch for them or give them ideas? This is a couple-part question, but you can answer that part first.
Yes, ma'am. We have Scott Waldroff, the city architect. He's going to be meeting with the business owners, with myself, one-on-one to kind of get their ideas and help kind of either expand, create their detail or their vision they want.
Yeah, some of it may not be that detailed, but I was just curious. Okay, so we'll do that in-house, which is great.
Right, and then also, you may remember, at last meeting, we approved design guidelines, not mandatory, but they were, Main Street came out and did a total analysis of everything from front facade, awnings, glasswork, all of those types of things to help people, to help them understand what's in the realm of possible, and maybe what they don't want to do that would hinder the aesthetic that we're trying to create in each one of the corridors.
And that will help the flow, too, because then you'll know, they'll, y'all understand our expectations, right? But then on top of that, so then you have that, and then, when it comes to the, we said that, didn't we say all this was going through the Architectural Review Board as well?
They're available to assist. That's correct.
Okay, so there, it's not necessarily like every time they meet, they're going to, we'll just make sure that they are part of the.
That's correct.
Okay, good. That also is good. And then the last part is the contractors, like, do we have to go out? Do we have to do, you know, an RFQ for that? Do we, do we get three, like, how, how is that going to work?
We'll, we'll probably go through an RFP process just based on, you know, how much work. We're going to try to group similar projects together to be able to procure those contractors.
Now, if we notice by chance that, because the one thing I, this, we, we're, and I'm guilty of this in the city, too, well, I've gotten off this now, but where it's like, well, if we're going to do one, and Sean, this isn't against you or anything, but let's just say one park, and then we're like, oh, well, let's wait till we get three parks just say one park, and then we're like, oh, well, let's wait till we get three parks designed or four parks designed before we go. And Sean, I'm just making that up, okay? But let's say that we're doing, like, I also don't want to get, like, what if we only have, you know, what if they're completely different kind of things and one of them's just like restriping of, you know, a parking lot? I mean, that's not something you have to go out to RFP for, right? And they're going to be something that's going to trigger?
Well, yeah, there's certain thresholds. If it's a certain amount, you know, if we can keep it, you know, as far as the city procurement policy and what it allows.
So it's going to be just what we already?
That's right. We have to go through a very deliberate procurement process. These are federal dollars that are supporting this. So there's, the reason we are doing this and not asking the property owner to do it is because of the burden of documentation, the Davis Bacon requirements, all of those things that are necessary to support the auditability and the reimbursement of these funds. We will use the city procurement process, which has been approved for this, this program. And you're going to see that in the policies next.
Now, so the only thing we don't have to do is necessarily wait till there's a certain amount. Like, if we have somebody that's a $300,000 project, we don't have to wait, we have another, like, that's a pretty big project. We could probably go ahead and go out to RFP.
That's correct.
Okay, that's all I'm asking. I didn't want it to be like, we're going to wait till we get 20 businesses and then we have one contractor, like, I just, I'm not saying y'all haven't followed that through. I was just wanting to make sure that we, that we are all on the same page. Okay.
The one thing I would clarify is that DEO is doing this in batches, in a, in slugs, if you will. Phase one, we have to get them all in and then they'll review and approve. And then we can go out to our bid for that. And we'll break out those bids according to our procurement policy requirements and what makes sense with regard to larger projects, you know, a $300,000 project is very different from a $100,000 project potentially in awnings versus.
So that's good to know. So you're saying that we can't even go and put out for anything until all of those in phase one have?
We have gotten, they're working this entire program in very deliberate steps.
So what if somebody like is not responding or they're whatever? Is there a point where we say, okay, we tried to contact, we tried to work and we got to cut it off so we can move forward with the other?
We'll have to do that.
Okay, that's it?
Okay, so the first tranche of money is 13-plus million. It's going to be allocated to all of those approved people, all at the same time. Okay? So then all of those bids can virtually go out at the same time.
Right, that's the idea.
Okay.
Yes, I'm glad you're breaking them up.
That's, that's what we want to know, yeah.
That'll speed up the process.
Yeah, okay.
And if there's money left over, can go into round two?
That's what we're anticipating because we've already had, as you saw on the slides, DEO has declined eligibility of a few. So we're just putting that money right back into the program for round two applicants that didn't have an opportunity on the first round.
Sweet.
All right. Just to make it clear, the city will be the contract holder with the contractor. The contractor will work with the city. Obviously, the owner consents to everything. So the city's not going to build something the owner doesn't want, but the city is the, it's, it's government money and that the city will be the client with that contractor and will have the obligation to see that it's done correctly before the contractor's paid.
Yay!
Okay, so.
So this was a presentation of the program.
Any other questions?
Very good. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, guys.
Very well.
You worked really long and hard times on that project.
I see you're sitting up close and that's good. We might need you in a minute.
Got another presentation in a moment with her, but with that, I draw your attention to item 11B, which is consideration of the approval of the hometown revitalization program business facade and building improvement revised policies and procedures. As background information, on June 14th, 2022, the commission approved the HRP facade and building policies and procedures to kick off the HRP program in the Harrison, Millville, Glenwood, and Beck Avenue areas. Due to the Department of Economic Opportunity and their ongoing HRP revisions, the policy development updates that are required, were required by DEO remain, to main, remain in compliance with the program are attached. So we've modified the entire program. They're highlighted in yellow in your, your packets. And it's minor changes that DEO required us to accomplish. With that, it's my recommendation, we go with the revision of the hometown revitalization program business facade and building improvement revised policies and procedures.
Anyone have any questions about those changes? Okay, if not, then entertain a motion to accept 11B.
I'll be abstaining from this one.
Oh, that's right.
All right.
I would like to move approval.
I'll say.
Any other discussion?
Kind of have to go on.
Call the roll, yeah, there's somebody else down there.
Commissioner Raider?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero with one abstention.
Okay. With that, I draw your attention to item 11C, which is the community rating systems and flood insurance information presentation. Again, Ms. Aldridge, if you come to the dais.
Crushing it today, Jennifer, crushing it.
I'm trying. And as you know, good news is, I've been working since, for like, since 2013, since we got last class rating change. So we have been in the CRS program since 1999. We started off as a class eight. And then in 2002, we were a class seven. And then in 2013, we moved up to a class six. And then starting and effective on October 1st, 2023, we will be a class five. And this program is not just rewarding for flood insurance rates. I mean, it's, but it just helps to help flood damage existing in new buildings and manage developed areas, not met on the NFIP. So we also get credit for helping areas that are not on flood, in the flood zone with those areas as well, like Cincinnati and Lake. So this is what the rate, does the rate change does? I just did just a difference between six and five. As of right now, we have, as of 12 to 2022, we have over 2,000 policies. I looked at the one in September and it's actually gone down a little bit. So some people have dropped their flood insurance. We, I want to encourage people to get flood insurance. It does protect your home if a place of flood event, just because you're not in a flood zone doesn't mean you don't flood. So it's really crucial to have that flood insurance to protect your home because homeowners' insurance will not pay for flood damage. This is just a different credit point. So as you can see, we are in the over 2,500 range now, so for class five. So we are working to get to a class four. I hope it will not take two, 10 years this time and hopefully be less than that. This is just the major changes from a class six to a class five that happened. There are more activities that changed, but it wasn't really major. I just, I wanted to really address the drainage maintenance program, which is just the everyday maintenance that the crew does outside is that, that helps, 45 points extra. The flood plain management planning, which is the substantial damage plan that y'all approved a couple of months ago, that also was a big change. That's also the local mitigation strategy plan in that activity. So we already get points for that, but the substantial damage plan is just added to that. Not everybody does that. Open space is also a big point that was happened. And the stormwater management, that was 105 points. So that's, that was really good. But the biggest one that I'm proud of is the higher regular standards. That was the ordinance that was passed in October. So that was a huge, huge point. That was the two-foot freeboard that was changed from one to two and the fill and compensatory. So it is important to, why is it important to have the NFIP flood, natural flood insurance? It will cover direct losses by surface flooding, including river flowing over banks, even local drainage problems. It won't just have, if a hurricane comes, but if the hurricane doesn't come, doesn't mean that you won't get, you know, a claim. So you're also able to participate in programs like the flood mitigation assistant program that we also help with, that we also got FMA 2020 coming along. So that really helps if you are, if you have NFIP insurance, you would qualify to have that program. Couple of things I really like to encourage people to do when they purchase a home is definitely know what flood zone you're in. Because if you're in a flood zone, A, A, E, V, E, you are mandatory to purchase flood insurance, especially if you have a mortgage. And, and if you are in one of those zones, make sure, check to see if there's an elevation certificate. If there's not, I recommend getting one because now with the flood insurance rates, it's not determined based on what flood zone you're in. It's determined on how your home is mitigated, its place on the flooding source, which is if you're near the ocean or the bay or a lake. That is how your insurance is determined now, no matter what zone you're in. And then the CRS discount helps, but if you're so many feet above the base flood elevation, then, and then you have that elevation to show it, then you will also receive discounts. Make sure you tell your insurance agents everything that your home is mitigated to do. So the purchase of flood insurance, you have, it is mandatory if you are in a VE, VA, AH, and AO. Definitely contact local flood insurance rates. I always highly recommend shopping around. Don't rec, don't rely on your mortgage loan folks to get you because they're just going to go and pick the first one and not shop around. So I always recommend shopping around your flood insurance companies, agents. And CRS is, should be automatically applied to the insurance. Now, when October 1st hits, it should, the 5% should change on October 1st automatically. You don't have to do anything. This is just some of the determinations on how the agencies now do their flood rates. So as I said, the elevations, your drainage area, they look at your flood zone and, you know, how many flights of, how many stories you have in your house, mitigation documents. That's why I just say definitely let your insurance agent know everything you're doing to mitigate your home or business. Okay, as I said, we are, I'm going to continue to work to get to a better class rating. As of right now, we are five, but to get to a class four, of course, continuing to proving the flood plain ordinance, getting a master drainage study plan. As we are doing that with the resilient grant, we are also doing it with Robinson Bayou. Also, things like the voluntary home buyout, once we purchase those homes and the FMA, that will also be included in the class activity that we're not getting credit for yet, but we will, hopefully in the next year or so. And just improving any maintenance drainage system efforts that just continue to, and of course, we want to continue to apply for hazard mitigation and the brick programs and flood mitigation assistance. And of course, this information can be found on the city's website and of course, any, I could be contacted anytime. And any questions?
First thing I want to say, if I can.
Go ahead.
I'm just tickled to death because anybody in the City of Panama City that purchases flood insurance gets an automatic 25% discount because of your work.
Starting October 1st.
Thank you so much. That's the bottom line right there, anybody.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to say, I think this is a reflection of the totality of efforts that have gone in. I mean, you listed a lot there at the end, Jennifer, voluntary home buyout, increased maintenance with our public works team, you know, I mean, even, even no wakes ordinance from the, from legal team. So I mean, like, we really are trying to throw everything we've got at, at solving, solving flooding issues across the city. And, and we just made it cheaper today to, for private owners to get flood insurance themselves. So that's a big discount.
Big, yeah. I was, I was going to say exactly what he did. I mean, this is really a picture of, and, and truly, some of this, some of us have been involved in, but a lot of this has come from just work you do day in and day out in your team. And then y'all bring it to us and we're like, oh, yeah, that sounds good, you know? For the most part, it's going to benefit, well, all benefits are. But it also, like, we hear issues, not as much as maybe some other things, but we hear, I'm sure Billy does, but, and maybe Josh, but of flooding. And it just shows that, you know, even for someone in particular, it may still be a hassle. I'm not saying it's not for some people, but it shows the, the effort and how much work has actually been done to go towards that. So that is just, I mean, just kudos to y'all. That's just, it's amazing. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Definitely couldn't have done without the support of y'all as a commission, especially with the ordinance. It's, it's not easy to, you know, make those decisions and make those higher standards, but it's, I definitely.
Thank you, Jen.
How would a normal, I mean, not normal, we're all normal, but how would somebody go about, how would you recommend somebody going about to find out their flood zone, like where they are in there, if they're in one at all?
Well, it is available to, on the northwest Florida, you can also see the one that's coming. There's, they are changing the maps and the current, but you can find it on the city's website or Bay County's website. They also have ours as well, so.
Is it listed on like the property appraiser's website on each party?
Property appraiser's website.
Bay County GIs. Bay County GIs.
Okay.
Or you can go to the city, but Bay County GIs. You also can go to the FEMA website. I would share with you two things. One is Director Guthrie, who is the director of Florida's emergency management, and I, as well as the mayor and administrator, Chriswell, the new administrator of FEMA, were talking about the flooding that's taken place within Panama City and that we're experiencing flooding in spaces that we've never experienced in the 114 years' history of the city. And part of that is because we've lost all of our trees. That absorption of the groundwater is now been severely decremented, meaning we have a higher water table, which means now spaces are more prone to flooding because there's less absorption capacity, particularly when there's a heavy rain. So I really echo what Ms. Aldridge shared, which is, you don't have to be in a flood zone to go and get this. It would be prudent to go ahead and look into getting flood insurance because homes are typically one of the most valuable assets that somebody has. And this would be an incredible asset to help insure your home at a relatively inexpensive rate. The second thing I'd like to share with regard to this is that we are working very, very closely on a number of grants that we're doing. Ms. Aldridge highlighted a couple, the Robinson Bayou Storm Drain Basin, which is $23 million worth of work to help us better manage our water, to demuck a lot of wetlands so that we can create more storage capacity. We have the $274,000 brick grant that's allowing us to do the assessment on the southern half of the city. We've got a legislative request that is in on this legislative session to help us to construct better stormwater. There's a myriad of activities that are going on that I believe will not only remedy existing problems, but will contribute to our pursuit to get to a class four. So I share this with you. It's a, it's a multi-pronged event to try to get to this. And at the end of the day, our citizens and our business owners are the winners.
Thank you. Speaking of flooding, can we take a break?
Thank you.
Yeah, it's really been a pain in the butt and I gained more weight, so.
This is the worst part of it at all. No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, exactly. So, anyway, I was thinking about traffic, but since you're gonna be there, I wanna call that to your attention. That where that drop is there, and I'm very aware of the sidewalks. I have two routes that I walk. I walk from where I live on Fairland to the dock at St. Andrews, and then I'll often walk downtown and walk back or ride my bike. So I realize it's a lot. We have all kinds of swollen sidewalks, and I know where they are, right? So I'm very careful. But in this case, that was one I just did not expect. And after I stepped off, there also was a pothole, so I tried to correct. I pulled my leg, tried to correct again. So anyway, it's just, I just loathe it, this broken leg thing. So I want, I literally came today for this. The second thing is, is I'm going to Jackson County for two projects that I have there. And the tax abatement thing, y'all, is so important. I know y'all know that. The projects could not come here because the incentives are better there. And so I offer any help I could give to better explain it to the taxpayers when and if that comes, maybe if we did some charts and show how the return on the investment is there. It's fun to be working, but I always have that little bit of guilt. So, thank you. Happy New Year.
Can you state your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Patty Sunday, eleven fifteen Fairland Avenue, three two four oh one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Patty. And in that design, one of the things we're gonna be doing across the entirety of the city as we do these SRF projects is include a sidewalk on every street, so that'll be helpful. Thank you so much, Patty.
Exactly the reason why we want sidewalks.
That's right.
Well, the P N, six fourteen Maple Avenue. I'd like to know, Baker's Court, and y'all starting from the Univista all the way to Frankfurt.
Right, yeah, Frankfurt all the way east to the end.
From Univista, I think Baker's Court stopped at Univista and go back to Frankfurt. Just wanted y'all, make y'all aware. There's some lines on those streets. Y'all need to make sure that they don't do away with those older lines. Y'all need to notify these peoples. Y'all need to put some sewer water lines, taps at their house, put them on their, put them on them brand new lines. They're not connected. I just wanna make sure y'all know that. They go taking off those older lines. Y'all will have folks crying that they don't have no water.
Notion on eleven F?
I have a motion in a second.
Any other discussion? Call roll.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus? Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Commission is adopted. Resolution twenty twenty-three oh one two four point six. Resolution providing for the amendment of the approved fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three budget for Baker Court stormwater and paving design.
Item eleven G is the consideration of approval of bid award for the P C twenty-three dash zero zero nine, which is the aluminum fabrication building stormwater improvements at the Nelson Street Shipyard Bulkheads to the low bidder, which is Marshall Brothers Construction and Engineering Incorporated in the amount of five hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred dollars. As background information, City of Panama City entered into a grant award agreement with Triumph Gulf Coast and Eastern Shipbuilding on August first, twenty nineteen. The grant is to provide funding for the infrastructure improvements, including the platins, the dredging, the bulkhead installations, launchways, equipment, and warehouse facilities on the easement, which is owned by the City of Panama City. With that, it's recommended, this is fully refunded, reimbursable by Triumph Gulf Coast Grant, and with that, it's recommended that we move forward and award the bid to Marshall Brothers in the amount of five hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred dollars.
Motion on eleven G.
I'd like to move approval, Mayor.
A second. Discussion, call roll.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Item eleven H is a consideration of approval of the DAG Architects Fee Proposal for the Architectural Service for the Center of the Arts Restoration Planning Project in the amount of seventy-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. As background information, RFQ P C twenty-three dash zero zero five was issued for advertisement on November fourth, twenty twenty-two, and the voluntary pre-qualification conference was held on November ninth, twenty twenty-two, with the deadline being November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. We received three responses to that bid. The evaluation panel met in November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, and selected DAG Architects as the most qualified architect for this responsive bid. The city commission approved me to enter into the contract negotiations with DAG on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting, and DAG has provided a fee proposal in the amount of fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars for the basic services and twenty thousand, nine hundred dollars for the historic preservation consultant for a total of seventy-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. With that, recommend we move forward with the approval of DAG. I would highlight that the primary customer for this is the Center for the Arts, and Jason Kressner, I believe, is in the audience, and Jason, thank you for your input to this process. Really appreciate it.
Any questions for Jason?
No more, actually, for staff.
I think, Jason, you wanted to speak.
It's weird seeing you without a hat on.
I don't think I'm supposed to wear it in the building. Jason Kressner, representing Bay Arts Alliance in nineteen East Fourth Street. I really wanna come up, take an opportunity publicly to thank you guys, not only for supporting me and my team, your long-term vision and commitment to the arts, but also for entrusting us with this very, very special building in our community, which has a lot of, a lot of potential that we have yet to even reach. And so I think DAG is a great choice to kinda dig in and get some of these renderings and thoughts. I do support this. My concern, as I had mentioned to you, was just if, as long as the matching funds for the small grant doesn't come out of our efforts to upgrade and fix current issues that we're already working on, I'm full, fully support you guys' decision.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I just had a question about the, what's the main purpose? Like, what are, what are we gonna do with these plans? Like, what's the purpose of this?
Well, this, this is the evaluation portion of it. This is not the final designs. This is gonna be giving renderings of what could be done in working in concert with historic preservation. This was the original City Hall. It was the original jail. And we certainly wanna maintain the integrity of that. But we also know from the visioning process that there's a concept to build onto that facility into the future, to enhance the arts that the Center for the Arts and certainly what the Bay Arts Alliance is doing. So this is, this is grant-funded. It's a matching grant, so we pay fifty percent of it. But this is all designed to start laying the foundation for what could be in the future. This is gonna be a multi-year process to go through and multi-phased grant process to have to go through to get the funding for this.
So what is the, like, will it also, 'cause after talking to Jason, I also realized that we don't really have drawings.
Right.
Will it also do that? Will it give us our existing situation too? Like, like our, I mean, like, I guess we don't have any original?
As-built or anything?
Right.
No, that's right.
So will this?
It'll, it'll give us not.
Like, down to the, down to the electrical?
It'll, it'll give conceptual, yes.
Okay, okay. And so it kinda gives an idea of that. And then the other thing was, I get, I mean, as much as I love historic preservation, I get a little bit concerned 'cause after we've gone through a couple steps with other things, we've gotten kinda burned on those, and it makes it more complicated for us in the future. We're not, you're not saying we're going after?
Not yet.
Like, okay, not, not right now.
We, there is a consultant on this team with DAG that will help give us advice on what we should pursue and what we shouldn't pursue. And I'm not just, I don't know what all those options are, and certainly look forward to bringing that back to the commission for further discussion.
You wanna be cautious about some of those things. Okay.
I agree with you, Commissioner. Those can be very costly.
It's a similar process to what we've gone through the St. Andrew's School. So, but if we're not moving to historical preservation, then there's.
Well, I don't know.
If you don't know, then this is part of finding out.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I, I'm being very honest that I've gotten burned since sitting up here with certain stuff and trying to move it to the registry, and then it's still sitting, or it's still whatever. It makes it more red tape that I just wanna make sure that, but if there's, if someone, you know, or the next commissioner or whoever, but yeah, okay, I just, thanks, Jason.
Motion on eleven H?
I'll move a motion.
I'll second.
Discussion, call roll.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay, item eleven I, which is the Marina Civic Center demolition contracting plan. So as background information, Marina Civic Center was originally constructed in nineteen fifty-seven, and the subsequent, subsequently irreparable damage occurred in twenty eighteen by Hurricane Michael. Through the City of Panama City's insurance provider, FMIT, and the, that the Marina Civic Center facility was immediately mitigated with, from the damage that had occurred. In twenty twenty-two, the city went through arbitration regarding federal funding for the replacement of the Civic Center. Fortunately, the city did not prevail in its arbitration, losing its thirty-three million dollar claim via a vote of two to one by the FEMA arbitration panel. The city received, did receive eleven million, received approval for eleven million dollars, which was reduced by a ten point five million dollar insurance reduction, thus leaving a remaining five hundred thousand dollars of FEMA funding that would be available to the Civic Center. The city's consultant, VBA, estimated the cost to repair the Civic Center to be approximately seventy-four million dollars. Subsequently, the city has gone through a very exhaustive evaluation process, working with artists, artisans, business leaders, public communities for a viable replacement for the facility, including the phase one of this process, which was the site recommendation, the concept design, and the pro forma business model with an estimated max capital cost of two hundred and four million dollars. The city is in the process of developing available funding strategies for the replacement of the Civic Center, which at this time includes both the Performing Arts Theater as well as the Events and Conference Center. In December twenty twenty-two, the city advertised for an RFQ to select a qualified construction manager at risk for the Civic Center demolition and the events area construction. Only one proposal was received in response to that RFQ. After reviewing the proposal and interviewing the proposers' key personnel and project team, the assigned bid evaluation panel determined that the proposal fails to meet the RFQ requirements for the qualifications and experience. With that, there's two, two parts to this agenda item. First is that we would reject the single construction manager at-risk bid that was received, and secondly, that we gain approval to move forward to advertise for a actual request for proposal for the demolition of the existing Civic Center facility. As you know, we've gone through this process, and one of the things we've heard from our citizens is to allow for green space to be down at the Marina. And with the concept of having an amphitheater, the objective is, once the Civic Center is demolished, the grounds would be made level, and that would be come back as a green space, the exact footprint of where the Civic Center currently is. The parking would all remain intact, all the way around it, as it is right now. We do have a cross-agreement with St. Joe with regard to use of their parking. I would highlight that Victor Dover was very clear that there is more parking in the historic downtown than there is in the entirety of the Panama City Mall. So there is not a shortage of parking. It's just the, how far you have to walk. And certainly, I think it's a, a great space, and we wanna get our citizens to be able to use the Marina grounds in a more appropriate way.
So interesting. Today, though, is, staff recommends rejecting the construction.
Right, 'cause there was no guaranteed maximum price. There was no experience level to that, and so.
Was there a price?
There was not.
So we didn't even get a price?
Uh-uh.
No.
No, they didn't come in with bids or anything, so it's just.
And so what we're considering now is just like, okay, putting it out there, you know, people who have overhaul, I mean, have done projects this big and of this scope, and maybe kinda cutting out that?
That's right.
That middleman. But now, we've never actually, like, in public, we've never voted on whether we all support tearing down the Civic Center. I guess this is the right time to talk about that. If anybody has any?
That's right.
Yeah, if anybody, obviously, we're not gonna, you know, go through with this if we don't, if we don't agree. So I just didn't know if anybody wanted to, if there's any input there.
So I don't, I don't, this is just my impression. I don't feel like we've really got a unified vision of where we're going here. So to take that into account, so the Performing Arts Center, hundred and seventy million, hundred and, or two hundred and something by the time we actually get to construction. You know, we were all like, hey, that's a huge shocking number. I'm kinda surprised we're still moving down that path because it seems so out there as far as from achievable perspective. And then what it shades, your decision-making on what you look at this facility existing, well, what if, what if this was the only building you'll ever get? You know, do you wanna look at doing something different with it? The other thing that we didn't incorporate into the last, the last, you know, Performing Arts Center proposal was the potential for an amphitheater. You know, we had the offer to potentially do an amphitheater at private costs that weren't on the taxpayers' backs, but we never actually incorporated that into the design. So instead of green space, do we wanna go back and try to revisit that?
No, I'm not aware of that.
Well, that's a correction to that. It was not for the amphitheater. It was for the museum portion. The amphitheater would be at the city's cost.
Okay.
I was about to say, I thought we'd get a free one.
So, so, so maybe then we go back and look at the, the private investment for museum there instead. I think part of what I'm, what I'm struggling with to make a decision is really, there's so many different ideas that I'm not really sure what we're trying to move forward together on. And I think that's also kinda to the point of even, even talking about the model in City Hall. I mean, we're still, it's still there. It's still creating conversation in the community about the boat ramp, yet we all seem to be in agreement. There's nothing happened to it. So I kinda like us to just make a decision on where we wanna go, and if it is the commission still in support of going towards a hundred and seventy million dollar facility, well, you know, then.
Well, I'll tell you what I'm thinking. This is what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
I'm thinking that around eighty million, and that's today, to renovate the building that's there, which is a huge haul too. I think all those numbers are crazy.
Yeah.
I, what I think's important is that, that the Marina is activated. And my kind of view about the Civic Center is, I know how important it is, okay? I'm not, especially to people who are musically inclined and all those things. And I performed there as a kid growing up and all of that, but I feel very comfortable with going in incremental steps. I don't think, I guess, just so you know, I'm not thinking if we tear down the Civic Center, that means that I'm going after a two hundred million dollar thing. To me, it's just what's the next logical step? What's the next incremental development that we could do? So I, what I don't want is for that building to stay there for years and years and years, and, and I'm not saying it would do that. I don't know. But what I don't want, I guess that I have come to grips, and after talking to citizens for the most part, that this, they wouldn't even wanna spend eighty million dollars. I don't know where we would get eighty million dollars, so that would be a whole, a whole thing too. But to me, the incremental step of, okay, we're committed, we have the funds for the Martin Theater. Bay High has theirs coming up, which is double the capacity, totally different, obviously, setup. But I feel like, it's not like our children are gonna be without the arts, or it just may not be at that capacity. So, you know, I was, I'm open to whatever's best incrementally, and I do think down the road, a Civic Center is, would be great. But that'll probably be, I mean, realistically, like, I see on the timeline here that there was a timeline put in there, like, twenty twenty-five. I was like, that ain't gonna happen. Okay, that's, I mean, we just gotta be real honest here. Like, that's just not gonna happen. So I'm, I guess what my vision is, is that we get it, we get it clean, that people wanna come and enjoy. I mean, like I said, if, if there's any inkling here that y'all think we could go out and get eighty million dollars, and at that point, probably a hundred, by the time we get grant funding and do all that. But I, the push comes from me, I would say, to Mark a lot, that it's in the sense of, like, if we're not, if we're all on the same page. I, I couldn't tell you for sure. I know exactly which direction we should go in. I guess I'm just saying that I feel like the Civic Center, that particular Civic Center is not, is not what I would want for the city in the future.
And I, I think.
That's the only thing I'm sure of.
Yeah, so if that's the case, then you proceed forward demolition, but you still gotta know what the number is. So what if the number comes back ten million dollars to demo the thing? I don't think that's.
To do what?
To demolition.
Oh, yeah, well, we don't know that yet.
Yeah, and so I think that's part of this process that I do think we should proceed forward with. But I do think that instead of just planning out green space, I think I'm ready to plan something else. I mean, like, I, like, if eighty million's too much to put the thing back together, well, a hundred and seventy is even, is even more. So rather than just waiting for, you know, somebody to come and, and create a miracle, turn water into wine, like, like, let's move on. Like, instead of green space, let's come up with something else that's gonna go there, whether it's an art museum, whether it's an amphitheater, whether it's something else. So the community has something to activate, 'cause we don't, we got green space. St. Joe's got the green space in their plan. The T dock would create more green space. Why do we need more green space on top of that? I think I'm just ready to move on, I guess, is what I'm really saying.
So you're not saying about the Civic Center. You're just saying you'd want it to be more than just, you'd want it to be, like, developed into?
Yeah, create a plan that's actually gonna be there ten, twenty years from now.
I think the point, though, was, is that we, we're not quite to that point. Like, we don't know what kinda grant money we can get. We don't know. And there, I mean, the, not you and I, but the commission up here voted to keep it there, the Civic Center. And so that would be my only, I'd love, I'd love just.
But that was before we knew how much it was gonna cost. That's before we knew all those things. I don't know if we revisited that, whether the commission would still support even doing that, because that was before we knew it was a hundred and seventy million dollars.
And but for one judge.
Yeah.
Okay, and but for one judge, we would've been given X amount of dollars, and we would've not spent it on that shell, okay? So right now, I think we're all in consensus that that building has to come down. We're not gonna spend eighty million dollars on that shell.
And we're not even voting on that.
Unless it's a crazy number. Unless the demo is some kinda crazy number.
Yeah, exactly. So, so we need to see what it's gonna cost to take it down, but based on everything that, all the engineering reports about the degradation of the building and how much it was destroyed and all that, something that's sixty-five years old, would we go back in that shell to put money? The chances are slim, unless the demolition is, is gargantuan. So I think we need to, I think we need to explore what the demolition is. That's gonna be a cost of moving forward.
Yeah.
Is clearing the lot, okay?
Yeah, I mean, I don't need to meet fifty million dollars.
If that is where it ends up.
Could be a couple million. Can we go over the money really quick, just to, you know, answer some of the questions before? Two things where, one, if you're looking at this, it says eleven million dollars, which, from FEMA, which was reduced by ten point five million insurance reduction, leaving us five hundred thousand dollars of FEMA funding.
Right.
Yes, can you explain that to everybody today?
Sure. So FEMA prevailed in the arbitration, and the project award was for eleven million dollars. That means they've awarded eleven million dollars, they say, is what it's gonna take to rebuild that building, which obviously we disagree with. In, with all FEMA projects, you have to take an insurance deduction. That insurance deduction, in this case, was calculated by not only what the insurance company did immediately after the storm to gut it of all of the wet debris and all the seats and the sheet rock and all the things, putting on a temporary roof. That was four million dollars that they spent.
Okay, so they think it's eleven million for us to renovate the entire?
Not eighty. They think it's eleven.
Eleven, that's right.
It costs them four million.
Just to?
Just to put.
Get the wet out of it.
Yeah.
And then the insurance company gave us.
No, it is insane.
It is. That's, that's why it's been a very frustrating process. And then the other six and a half million dollars is what the insurance paid according to our schedule of values for the building, depreciated. It was six point five million. So we have a total of ten point five million dollars allocated to the Civic Center. And you take that as a deduction from what FEMA has approved, is eleven million dollars. So that means the best that we can ever get out of FEMA is a half a million dollars. And I'm gonna tell you, it's not worth the pain and suffering of this community to have to go through and claim a half a million dollars to go through EHP and all of the hoops that you have to go through to get that.
And I would like to add, the only reason we haven't started on the Martin Theater, we're ready.
We're, we're waiting for FEMA.
We've got the funding. We're waiting on EHP.
That's correct.
And that's a historic prep. Like, if you move any building, I mean, you move any wall.
Any dirt, anything, you have to go through EHP. That's why, for clarity, it's not only the Martin Theater. It's the Martin Luther King Rec Center. It's Joe Moody Harris. It's Carl, I'm sorry, Carl Gray Park just came in, and it's Daffin Park, and it's Oakland Terrace, just as a few that we're waiting on FEMA to do their environmental and historic preservation. We cannot move forward until we get that green light. That would also be the case in this, if we went and claimed that extra five hundred thousand dollars. I'm not there yet to come before you make that recommendation, but I'm just explaining how frustrating this process has been. The mayor has engaged very deliberately with not only the administrator of FEMA, but also Region Four Administrator. I know several here, the commissioners have also engaged. This has not been a pleasant experience for our citizens. They have been not supported by our federal government with regard to this action.
Ken, so then events, they were brought up, like how there's a competition of events. Let's say that we put the money in and we have a, a great outdoor theater, okay? Or multi-use space there, or whatever.
That's right.
Talk to us about our lease, and maybe this is more Nevon too, but talk to us about the lease and how that would affect, like, even in our packet, we've got, oh, we could do boat shows temporarily. You know, there's a lot of things. We have pop-up movies. There's a lot of things we could do. Can you elaborate on that with St. Joe?
Those grounds are available, but there's twelve instances where a year that we're, we would need to coordinate with St. Joe that we could use for public events such as food trucks and festivals and those types of things. It would just have to be coordinated. Nevon, do you wanna amplify on that?
Or is that? The, yeah, there is, there are some provisions in the lease. They govern the remainder of the Marina properties. But if the city has a specific plan that it plans on doing over there, it would.
Like a series of concerts or whatever?
Yeah, but that's not, but generally, the lease doesn't get involved in concerts. It's more of events, like weddings and food trucks and things like that. But.
Because even in the interim plan, we had where you could do hookups for food trucks, so we clearly would plan on doing that as well, so.
But I, I asked the question, do we have ten million dollars is what?
Ten and a half.
We just said, ten and a half.
And do we? Have we used that?
Well, four of that, out of that ten and a half million was what?
Mitigation.
Mitigation. So that's counted toward it, but it's six and a half million. We went through and used funds out of that to support our claim against FEMA. Right, so that's roughly, I think, about a million and a half dollars that we had to go through for all of that, to include the reenactment on Hurricane Michael on that, so all of that.
It's my children.
So we have.
I want the public to understand that we spent the four million dollars on mitigation so that FEMA wouldn't come back later and say, well, you didn't protect the building.
That's right.
I mean, we went through all the proper steps that we needed to do to, to make sure that we were in compliance.
And I still feel confident that the money we spent on fighting them, thinking we really had a pretty darn good chance to win, that everyone would've thought that was a huge win if we'd gotten thirty-three million dollars.
I think we're just beyond that. I mean, I don't, FEMA's even part of the conversation.
Well, we never get to talk, so this is nice.
I haven't got to say a word yet, but I've got, when you're all done, I wanna say something.
I was pretending to have a million. Five million dollars is left. So what I'm saying is, instead of, instead of, time is money. And so instead of just putting more green space out there, take your five million and put it into actually building something that's gonna be there, rather than continuing to fight all the fights that we fought on this, and, and move forward in a way that our citizens are gonna be able to utilize it for performances, not just green space.
So if, if I understand you right, would you be advocating that we do maybe a Victor Dover charrette on what the citizens would like to see in that residual space?
That's great. I'm fine with that, 'cause I, because I believe where we're gonna end up is similar to how the first charrette process went, and it was amphitheater. It was access to waterfront with boat ramps staying and getting everything situated so that can, and hopefully, maybe we'll be able to attract some partners that can add other amenities to that. I just think we're gonna waste a lot of time proceeding forward, and if we continue down the path of trying to do a hundred and seventy million dollar center and keeping that part of our visioning process, and then staff having to work through all of that, trying to make a, a reality, something that we could go make a reality today.
Billy?
Yes, thank you. Everything has been said that is very, very good, and I agree with, with everything that's been said this morning. You know, the bottom line is, at the end of the day, it's money. It's taxpayer money. And it's our job to be good stewards of that money. I'm a sentimental person. I get accused of probably in my family of being too sentimental at times, emotional, have feelings, and memories and nostalgic things. The Civic Center means a lot to me, and I've stated that many times. It means a lot to every person up here. Mayor Brunnicki, you were a little boy when it was here. You remember? So many great events you've been to. I know, I know people, my, my mind swims, but when we say a hundred and seventy million, we're not talking about apples for apples. Hundred and seventy million is the giant, the venue that's a multipurpose venue. A hundred and seventy million is the giant, the venue that's a multipurpose venue with moving seats and moving walls and... All the bells and whistles of, uh, you, you know, for having any kind of event.
Well, I think the eighty million was too. Didn't that have a...
Well, I, I just keep hearing so many numbers, so forgive me, uh, you know.
The original one was seven million, and today it would be seventy-five. So, go ahead, for the same building.
And if we look at the history, you know, there is a, the, the emotional attachment. We cannot, I can't vote with that, you know? And, uh, Mr. Frank DiPinto, your letter was wonderful. Your email was great, and I'm in agreement with you, you know? It means a lot to me. Uh, nineteen fifty-seven, you know, when that, when that was constructed, and it served its purpose. I want another one. If we can't have that one, Mr. McQueen's told me it's so contaminated, it's not even worth going in there and doing it. He said, if you're gonna walk in there, you're gonna put on a mask, you know? It's bad. It's worse. And that's what makes me upset, is how FEMA treated it. When we do it, when we did a video reenactment and hired a company with wind machines and rain machines, and it was all part of the evidence, uh, and I'm just, I'm venting it out today, and I'm sorry. I'm with everybody else. Let's get a plan, let's do it. Uh, if it's gonna cost a lot of money to hire Victor Dover, I don't wanna do that. I don't see why we can't do our own workshop on this.
We probably can.
You know? There's no sense in spending money with consultants and bringing people down here to do everything for us that we can do ourselves. That's, I would like to say, that's, I want that, no.
I think first things first, you gotta find out how much it would cost to demo.
It's important.
Find out how much it costs to demo regardless.
Regardless.
But what we're voting on today, let's be honest, is to reject...
Yes.
A single bid.
Yeah.
You know, we can come back to this.
Without a price.
Yes.
Right, correct. Yeah, so, so there's two parts to this agenda item. Number one is to consider rejection of the one proposal that we received to be the construction manager at risk. So I'm, my recommendation is that we, uh, reject that bid. Thank them for their effort, but it's, uh, does not meet the needs of this community. Then secondly, is to gain permission to go out and put out an RFP for a hard bid on what it would cost to demo the Civic Center.
Yeah, and if it's astronomical, then we got other things to think about.
And then that, that proposal will come back and the decision we made at that time.
Air motion?
Yeah, I don't think we've made a decision that we have to have a, the bells and whistles with a, with a building. That's just a dream.
I would, the only thing I would like to add is even if we do something like what Josh is talking about, which I, of course, love, I mean, the more activation, the better. But it still doesn't mean in the future that a future commission or a future whatever would say, oh, we still love that site. And for some reason they're what, you know, I mean, it's gonna be a really long time, and I do think we have some other alternatives for sites if we need to.
I agree.
I just think it's, let's just breathe, get a hard cost, vote on this, either to do whatever.
It does, it doesn't have to be right where it's sitting.
That's right. But I, I do, I do wanna say, provided the number, because I wanna be very clear with this specific point. You said eighty million, and that is the number that I have got, but that is to modify it to a multipurpose facility. That is not putting it back together as it was. We have a different number for that.
What was that other number?
I think it was thirty-five or forty, something like that.
According to VVA, uh, they said it was seventy-four million dollars to put back the facility, as was with current technology, with current equipment, uh, that was not in the facility originally.
And not multi-use, wasn't it?
It is not a flexible venue where you don't, it's not...
There's no thirty-three million dollar option.
So where did our thirty, where did our thirty-five and forty million dollars...
We were just discussing...
We're trying to get an insurance, or, or, or try to get from FEMA.
Yeah.
Well, what we were hoping, if I'm right, is that if we were to get that money from FEMA, we could go for getting a matching grant from Triumph or something like that to get to that, at the very least, to get to that seventy-four.
So that number was not based upon construction cost to put it back together?
No.
No.
It was the, at the time, it was an estimate of what it would cost to build a new one, but obviously, yeah.
Somebody's estimates, where every estimate we've gotten, I mean, just like we go out, go up to, to redo, uh, a park, it's two billion dollars, then we get the, all the estimates, and then they're between four and five.
Sticker shop.
I don't know where the thirty-three came from.
Well, and I am a proponent, you can only control what you can control. Apparently, we have five million dollars that we can control something with. I don't wanna count on another single person for anything else regarding this project.
Agreed.
Because it is, it has been a headache and a half.
But it was important for people to know, the eleven million, that number is not, that doesn't, I mean, we, we've, you know, four was spent on that, one point five spent on that.
It was a bit part of it.
And it's, it's important to be very clear about where that's gone.
That's right.
And Mark, you, we do have that money allotted to the side, the leftover money allotted to the, to the side of that.
That's correct.
And when it comes to the slips, I want everybody to understand, we haven't received any money. Uh, the obligation...
They, uh, it was obligated for eleven million dollars.
Okay, and we know it's gonna probably be twenty million dollars, so.
Just in this past fall. Probably.
And, uh, Doc had mentioned earlier about using our relationship with St. Joe in the future for anything we might, and that is something we would absolutely consider, and I don't think they would be against. So, I mean, they're, we're looking at every possible option that, you know, doesn't take a, um, and any other options anybody has, I wanna come, you know, wants to email or do whatever, I mean, they're good ideas, so, alright, that's it.
Yep. If there's private sector, uh, partners, we, we, we would need to search, search and keep searching.
Isn't it ironic, though, that if you're diligent enough to have ten, or the amount of insurance that we had on the building, that we get penalized? If we had no insurance on the building, FEMA would've had to write us a check for eleven million.
Exactly.
I mean, that system's broke.
That is so true.
That does not make any sense.
No.
You're rewarded, or you're, or you're punished for, for, for being diligent. Go ahead.
I walk through here in six fourteen Maple. Our biggest problem in, in all of this, I know we, we throw everything on Michael. Michael did come. Michael did what Michael did, did. Now, it's, it's up to us to do what we need to do. Our main problem, main issue of a government, about to talk about the governor, what he can do. Why can't he do something with pride gouging? He got a person in place. Our whole problem, ever since Michael been, to, to all the citizens of Panama City, make no difference from, from here, west, east, pride gouging, everybody taking, everybody took Michael, taken advantage over Michael. And nobody's saying, stopping these folk from pride gouging. And that's what, that, that was killing everybody, not just the city, killing all of us. And so we're, I mean, we can sit here and, uh, call for spilled milk, it doesn't happen. We did not do what we should've done. Why? Who ever looked at that? Nobody thought that we would never have nothing like this. You don't know. We did not have enough money to insure on that, that arena. One thing, somebody looked at it. Never thought about what it would ever take to rebuild it if a storm came, if Michael came, to put that Marina back together again. But we're looking at everything else. And I'm listening to you, and I think whatever y'all finna go through right now should be a no vote. You not be, should not be sticking out chicks, knowing what, nothing, what they're gonna cost. We need to know what, what we're paying. As someone just said, it's taxpayers' money. We're supposed to handle it carefully. Shouldn't just throw it out there in the wind and let it blow wherever we want to go. But we need to. We need to think about pride gouging. You can tell the governor, talk about everything else. We got a man in office, supposed to be doing over that. But we let it happen, from gas to everything. This ain't nothing but a pride gathering thing. We taking advantage of Michael. So, we done, if, for your time, for my time, somebody say, no Marina. I know, I know for the Marina, when people put there, wasn't even nothing there. City, sure, uh, Harrison Avenue stopped that government street, that fuzz it went. Rest of that was water out there. But, uh, but we'll, we just don't need to crawl, spill, spill milk. Do what you need to do. Get it done that the people would be, be proud.
I'd like to say one thing. I wasn't, when I was speaking about a, a consultant or a company to help us, I wasn't just signaling, signaling Victor Dover, cause they are wonderful, and they did, I loved them, you know? So I was just talking about, generically speaking, so don't take that and run with it, people, you know? Cause they've done a great job. If, if we can do it ourselves, though, in-house, then let's do it, you know? That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, well, and I think that it's something for us to talk about, figure it out, stack it.
We're not ready yet for that. Oh, there you go, sir.
Oh, you're the mayor pro tempore.
I am the mayor pro tempore. What am I supposed to, so have we, have we voted yet, or what do we do?
Mr. Raiders, uh, we have...
Oh, Mr. Mr. Yes.
DiPinto.
Come forward and speak, sir. State your name and address.
Brudneck, you come back and vote too, don't you?
Oh, he'll be back.
He'll be back.
He'll be back.
I, I just, um, just, uh, listening, I was trying to get a handle on everything, which seems to be impossible.
Can you, can you state your name and, name and address?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Frank DiPinto, eight oh one, uh, West Thirteenth Street, apartment C forty. Thank you. It seems that there is no money, um, there's only enough money to demolish, uh, the Civic Center, not enough money to rebuild the Civic Center. I mean, we're, it seems like ten million dollars would be the operable amount we're talking about. Is that correct?
Sounds like it.
That's what we've been told.
Okay, I mean, right now, I might try to get, but to get a hundred and seventy million just seems impossible. I mean, it just seems impossible. So that we're looking at, uh, vacant, uh, a lot with grass on it that we can use for frisbee and so on.
Well, that's what we were saying, we don't know yet.
We just don't know yet.
Okay, okay.
We could do a charrette's or something.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, uh, Victor Dover had, in our planning process, he has a mixed-use area. I don't know. Have you referred to that at all?
No.
Okay, um...
I haven't.
Okay, his plan, he has a plan here. I was wondering if the city council is, uh, city commissioner has, uh, considered that, uh, process. Which I guess you need, you need a, uh, piece of land that...
I've got your letter right here.
Okay, uh, a piece of land that a company would be investing in, rather than a piece of land that we would get grants for. Cause that company that invested in it, they would come up with the money to build. And that, this mixed-use, uh, scenario, um, you know, allows for that. I was just wondering if the city commissioner's given any kind of thought to that.
No, I think we've been hung up on the Civic Center right now. We just haven't, we haven't moved forward clearly.
Yeah. I'll give this to somebody if they wanna look at it.
Sure.
It might, might help.
We can make copies of it.
Okay, um... Thanks for all the information, thanks for all the confusion, uh, go back and, go back and think about it.
Well, you know, it is what it is. It may not be pretty, but that's what it is, so.
The old song says, "Vogue in my world."
But I appreciate everybody.
Thanks for your emails, Frank. I do read them.
Right. Okay, so, they're twofold on eleven I, one that we reject, and the second one we put out for a hard bid.
That's great.
Okay, do we hear motion to that effect? I'll motion to approve, okay?
And I, I will too, but mayor, I just wanna make sure if there's anyone else that needs to...
Oh, is there anybody? I'm sorry.
Now's the time, if they wanna comment, I wanna hear it.
Yes, please speak.
Didn't know if there's anybody else.
You looking around?
Jimmy Sesselstein, twelve oh eight Cherry, Panama City, Florida, three two four oh one. I just think we need to not go so fast. Um, we haven't, I know it sounds like we're not, it does sound... We, we need to check out all our options. We haven't looked at redoing the Marina that we have now. I know it's old, but it might be the only thing that we can, uh, have, that auditorium now. Cause I don't see us getting that kind of money, being a town of thirty-five thousand people. It would be nice, be a good wish, but that building is still solid. And, uh, that shell would cost a lot of money to rebuild. It's also gonna cost a lot of money to demo. Cause that building is built, it's got, you know, it was designed for a bomb shelter, and there's one underneath the stage now. That building is gonna be very, very expensive to demo. It might be better...
It is gonna be expensive, that's why we wanna know.
It might be better...
That's why we're not gonna move fast.
We'll find out the price.
We're not gonna move fast on it.
Cause it might be very, very expensive to demo, and we will never have anything in the future. And that's a twenty-five hundred seat auditorium, I believe.
Absolutely.
And that's a huge auditorium, and I've seen you play there before.
Many times.
And, uh, that built, that shell is worth something. That shell is worth something. And you can make it semi-multi-purpose, you know? If it was back in the condition it was, man, there's been, you know, cons, I've gone to, I don't know how many concerts, Bay Arts Lights. We need something that's bigger than Martin Theater. Thank you.
Of course, yes.
And I'll add to that, that's what I'm struggling with. I'm struggling to, to tear it down without a plan on what happens thereafter. And the green space is great, but I really think we just need to envision what's going to be there long-term.
I think we're all struggling with that. The, the problem is, is that the building itself, right now, it's sixty-five years old. Yes, the shell on the outside, it looks good, go inside. What's the cost of taking what's there and redoing? Is it gonna cost more to fix something that's sixty-five years old and sick?
Wherein, how much is it gonna cost?
And three, you know, I mean, that, that's the thing. So right now, we just need to find out how much it costs to knock it down, and then, then we decide.
And everybody's, I know my time's up, but putting an amphitheater, having bands out there and food trucks, that's all eliminated by St. Joe. Three events in four days, that's right there in the contract. Isn't that correct?
Twelve, twelve evening, twelve event days, twelve event days.
Out of a whole year.
Out of the whole year. I, I read it as three events, four, total of four days.
I think our attorney can speak to that better than anyone else.
But that's on their, their event space, isn't it, Nevin?
No, that's on ours.
Or is that on the other side of Marina too? Outside of their lease space.
Mm-hmm. And you can't be happy to have a report, maybe, at a future meeting and go over the old lease. It has been a year or two, uh, since I've looked at it, but would be...
Yeah, that's the first I've heard of twelve, only twelve events in a year.
Be, be happy to...
No, not us.
Yeah, it, it has nothing to do with an amphitheater. We could have three hundred events a year at the amphitheater.
We could have three hundred events over there.
But, but, having said that, those are excellent questions. I just didn't read the lease before I came in today, but would be happy to put that on the agenda in the future and go over it.
Well, I know everybody is ready to wrap this up.
It's three events, four days, no point.
Um, yeah, I would've known, cause I can tell you right now, I would not have agreed to do, like, that's all we can have. They're talking about, anyway. Okay, uh, one thing I just wanna reiterate, we need to fi, I know we're finding out how much it's gonna cost, but when people, when someone says that, well, why don't we just redo it, that we would still have to go, uh, go out to find eighty million dollars.
That's right.
Like, we don't, we have, we've made it very clear in here, we have five million dollars.
Correct.
The other part is, is that, um, I think it'd be great if we could all get that, a copy of the engineering report, because I don't think the structure is what people think it is, and I think it's important to prove, we, we paid for all those studies, and, and not studies, but, uh, the engineering reports and the condition of the building, and three of them, right?
Hey, this might be an easy solution. Why don't we go out to bid and see how much it costs to repair it? Do the same thing we're doing with the demo.
I'm game for whatever. But the last thing I was gonna say is that I think a lot of people will remember in the Civic Center, you know, we got, I can't tell you how many complaints I got, that it wasn't making money.
It's never made money, Jenna.
Yeah, and I'm okay with it not making...
And it never will.
Okay, I'm okay with it not making money.
Yeah.
I, I was okay with that, cause it's a civic service, it's like a park, right?
Yeah, it's a service.
I'm okay with that, but I want people to remember what Mark was trying to accomplish. And we can't forget those. What we were trying to accomplish was that we'd ha, we would have a Civic Center that wouldn't necessarily lose, that we would be able to do whatever. That whether it's a hundred and seventy million or eighty-five million, to say that we can't do it would be probably the same position they were in when they built it to begin with. Seven million dollars was a ton of money. Now, I'm not saying the citizens should pay for that, but it's very small-minded for us to think that we're talking about putting this on the citizens. It was never about the citizens. It was about get, going out and getting, you know, seeing what the county, you know, what the county could contribute, going and seeing what TDCs could contribute.
And have we done that?
Go out, well, Mark's been actively working on those things, so it wasn't like, no one was ever gonna commit to doing a hundred and seventy million dollar thing without funding being in place. This was assuming that the dream was bigger. And if we can't do it, we can't do it. But regardless, even if we renovate it, we gotta go out, and I'm sure that seventy-four million is probably not even good anymore. It's probably not, but anyway, but... But, anyway, but you don't want that on taxpayers either, so we have seventy-four million dollars, like, just so the, like he said, thirty-five thousand of us are paying for even seventy-four million dollars to do it. So I think, if we're going to be realistic, let's be realistic. Like Josh said, we have five million dollars. Let's get a price on what it costs to demo, and, you know, I'm sure that there's a way to get, uh, I mean, that, that quote was given to us, seventy-four million, I don't know how long ago that was, but-
Yeah, last summer.
Yeah. So, Josh, I think that, we should look at that instead of paying somebody to do it, or get, because if somebody were going to give you a quote, I mean, I know what it's like for even a little small house. If somebody was going to give you a quote to really tell you what it would be to remodel that, that it would, we'd have to pay somebody.
No doubt.
Like, it's, you know, that's a lot, I mean, you're talking about all the consultants we've used before on the new technology and all of that. So, let's look at that seventy-four million one we got last summer and see how in detail, and Josh, you look at that too, and that's-
And they couldn't guarantee it.
Of course not.
I mean, no way, because you, you're talking about, this building was seven million dollars sixty-five years ago, equates to seventy-five million today. The new thing that we're looking at a hundred and seventy is about two and a half times as big. So, it's all dollars and cents wise, it, it, it all fits. It's just a question of how we get to a point that we get, why would we spend half of what, of, of, of the hundred and seventy and get something that we don't want?
Well, now-
That's not, I mean, it may be functional, you know?
If we had seventy-five million dollars-
Yeah, I mean, if we had seventy-five, we could go out and find the other seventy-five or a hundred. So, let's find out what it would cost to take this down, and then we'll start figuring out what we can have, where we'll, where we want to put it, and what it's going to cost. But this one has got to go down. I think we all agree, the building needs to come down.
Well, I want to say, yeah, I want to-
Unless it's, I mean, listen, if it's, if it's ten to fifteen million dollars to take it down, it must be worth something, you know?
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay. All right, hear motion on eleven I?
We have a motion and a second.
So we have a motion to reject, right?